Good evening, we're going to call this meeting to order, the Monday, November 14th meeting of the County Commission. I want to remind everyone to silence their cellphones during the duration of the meeting. I also want to thank the Sheriff's Department and those Sheriff's deputies who are here, for being here and being present. The first item on the agenda is the invocation and the pledge. We have the invocation tonight by Commissioner Steve Smith, the pledge by Commissioner Judy Herbert. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with sincere thanks for the many ways you've blessed our county. We ask your continued blessings on each of us in our community. Comfort those who are ill or have lost loved ones. We give thanks for all who serve and protect our community. Keep your hand over them as they carry out their dangerous missions. Watch over and protect everyone in uniform here and around the world as they protect us from evil. We hope for peace and remember those who serve every day, not just one holiday a year. We pray for wisdom for our leaders of our country, our state, and here in this room for those who seek to serve our community. Please bless all our efforts and may they be to your glory. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is roll call. If the Commissioners will please press their present buttons. We got them all. Record the roll, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-two present, one absent, Commissioner Sturgeon absent, and one vacant.
I did hear from Commissioner Sturgeon that she's not feeling well tonight. Next, we have approval of the minutes. Those were emailed to each of you. I will entertain a motion. I have a motion from Commissioner Smith and a second from Commissioner Williams. If you are in favor of the minutes, so first of all, any questions or additions that need to be made? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no button. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Next, we have citizen communications. We have a total of fourteen who have signed up to speak. Our rules dictate that we have thirty minutes to allocate to communications, and when we divide that by fourteen, we get two minutes and fifteen seconds per person. And I know you guys have internal clocks that'll be able to help you, but I also have counsel here to help me. He'll have a stopwatch and will signify and let me know when it's time for me to ask you to stop. First one I have on the list is Ms. Mary Pierce. As I call your name and you come to the podium, please give your name and...
Your city.
And your city. You no longer have to give your address.
I'm Mary Pierce, Franklin, Tennessee. Since the day I have come to Franklin, which was at this point a very long time ago, I have worked to try to save our historic resources and our sense of place. I strongly support tonight the resolution that will be brought forward on a tax district for the historic resources. When I moved to town, most of Main Street was empty. We had a waterbed store, we had a thrift store, we had a used shoe store. What I am also asking tonight is, I put this together for the county with an intern a long time ago about what matters in Williamson County, and these are your national register properties. And I am begging you to require a demolition permit before they are torn down. They have no voice, they have no protection, and a demolition permit with a hundred-and-twenty day wait would do a lot to support saving this rapidly vanishing resource. Thank you.
Next on the list I have is Mr. Bob Ravner.
Good evening, Bob Ravner, Franklin, Tennessee. While I'm the current president of the Downtown Neighborhood Association in Franklin, also a vice president of the Board of Friends of Franklin Parks, I speak to you as a private citizen who lives in downtown Franklin. Our economic vitality and the reason my family moved to Franklin, Williamson County, and the economic vitality of the future has a lot to do with our historic preservation and the ability to maintain that now and into the future. I was shocked, like many people and many people I've spoken with, that there are no protections in the county. While it was frustrating for my family to go through historic zoning in Franklin, looking back five years hence, it was well worth the time and the effort and the restoration process, and would advocate on behalf of many people for the county to look at something and would be willing to participate in some kind of commission or task force that can look at ways in which we can protect county properties and historic buildings because that's what continues to bring people here and what makes us very special. Also would speak in favor of tax, lowering taxes, keeping taxes manageable for historic properties as well. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Christopher Richards.
Evening, I'm Christopher Richards. I live in Brentwood. Last week, I won the special election for District Seven. I'll be taking my place with you next, in the next meeting. I'm not able to sit up here with you today because the election is being certified later this week. I'm here to ask the Commission today to delay the vote on two resolutions because I would like to have a voice in these decisions. They are as follows. Resolution 11-22-32, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a long-term lease agreement with Vulcan Construction Materials LLC, which is located adjacent to county-owned unincorporated property and wishes to extract raw construction materials from this property. Before leasing land for mining, the county should engage the services of a certified mineral appraiser who can determine the actual value of the mining operation and the impact of the land. I've done some casual research, and I'm concerned that without enlisting an expert opinion, the county may not be taking full advantage of the potential of this lease agreement and the income that can be derived from this agreement. I'm asking you that you table this amendment so that we can better research it before voting on it. 11-22-34, resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissions concerning Rule 5.4 debating the subject. This resolution regards calling the question, which is used to terminate the conversation on any particular resolution and to force a vote whether Commissioners who are requesting to speak have been heard or not. Presently, if a Commissioner calls the question, a vote is taken as to whether to stop the conversation or not, and a two-thirds majority vote is required. This resolution, if approved, will only require a majority vote. I completely disagree with the spirit of this resolution. The County Commission should encourage discussion and listen to all opinions. It is through this healthy debate that we are able to come up with unique solutions for our residents. Cutting short, the debate is allowed by a two-thirds majority vote, and I don't agree that we should limit it to a simple majority. I ask that you table this resolution so that I might have a chance to understand why this rule amendment is under consideration and why the existing two-thirds majority rule is no longer tenable. Thank you.
Good evening. Tim McLaughlin, Franklin, Tennessee. I serve on the Board of Equalization for Williamson County. Last June, a year ago, some landowners that owned businesses in the downtown historic area came and talked to us about their properties had gone up as many as just four times the value was on the last assessment. Though the assessment was accurate, we understood the problems that came out of that, that the landowners that owned the commercial areas in the historic area will no longer be able to afford to have retail businesses in those areas if this continues. So what I'm asking for you tonight is the fact that I understand there's a proposal that you're considering. If we want to continue to enjoy the downtown area of Franklin, the uniqueness of it and the quaintness of the area with all the little shops, then some kind of relief is going to have to happen for these businesses to be able to continue because retail doesn't, is not going to pay the bills. So I would ask tonight that you would consider not the residential, but just the commercial side of that, that, so that we can continue to see Franklin continue to flourish downtown and all the revenue that we get from them as well. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Brian Preston.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Preston. I not only live in District Eight, I also own 317 Main Street, which is Mellow Mushroom, Rock, Paper, Scissors, as well as Johnny Q. And I just want to give you guys the experience share, is my taxes on 317 went from forty-eight thousand to a hundred-and-six thousand in this big increase. What most people don't realize is that that's a pass-through function to those companies that I just shared with you that have their location in the building. And that is causing, I mean, it literally drew tears out of one of my retailers because we passed it on. Now, I had a Commissioner share, said, please, let, you know, why don't you, why don't you guys, the building owners, do more? I'm already offering the leases below what market on some of these national brands. My concern is, is that if we're not careful, downtown will end up with hedge funds, attorneys, national brands, and a lot of the charm and special stuff that makes us all want to be there, won't be there. We'll be the next Aspen because the, I'm a financial guy, so I mean, I'm not throwing myself completely under the bus, but if you want that special charm, this is what kind of is needed to help us get some relief on the retailers. If you don't believe me, go ask. Walk down Main Street, ask the retailers, you know, how profitable are you? How much margin do you have? Is this extra weight going to be something that allows you to stay here? Because I think if it's a matter of just soaking the building owners, that's not actually what the result you're going to get. We'll just end up with a lot of national brands, financial firms, and you'll miss out on what's made this special. Thank you.
Heidi Hood.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Heidi Hood, and I serve as the Managing Director of the Downtown Franklin Association, a division of the Heritage Foundation of Williamson County. In this role, I have the privilege of advocating for economic vitality and preservation in our historic downtown Franklin district. Today presents an opportunity that could benefit not just downtown Franklin, but also the rest of the county and the rest of the state, by creating the possibility for another tool to be placed in the belt of local governments so they have the option to protect and preserve their historic districts as desired in the best interests of each respective county. Since its founding in nineteen eighty-four, the Downtown Franklin Association has spearheaded the revitalization of Franklin's historic downtown core. Working in partnership with downtown property owners, business owners, preservationists, city and county government, and the Heritage Foundation, this community has created one of the nation's Main Street success stories. Now, downtown Franklin boasts an award-winning Main Street. In May of nineteen ninety-five, Franklin was honored as one of greatest American Main Streets. It was the official award in the first year of an annual competition held by National Trust for Historic Preservation. This success story has brought tourists from all over the world and has even served as the deciding factor for those deciding to build their lives, do business, create, and fill jobs in Williamson County. The beneficial effects of this historic district across the county are evident, especially when considering that every household saves just over eleven hundred dollars in annual taxes due to tourism, and downtown Franklin is the primary driver for tourism in Williamson County today. While this initial success story of downtown Franklin is amazing to share, the continued success of the district is not guaranteed. In twenty twenty, the world shut down and small businesses suffered greatly. In twenty twenty-one, properties countywide were reappraised, raising property taxes by two to three hundred percent for many of the properties downtown. Most of these property taxes, as has been said this evening, are passed to the tenants, and this financial burden adds to the challenge of a recovery from a pandemic, rising inflation, hiring challenges, and the ongoing weight of additional maintenance for historic properties. I'd like to ask these questions. Are we creating an environment that could eventually drive out the very stakeholders that helped make downtown the vibrant district that serves the county today?
Next, we have Terrell O'Connor.
Hello, everybody. I am here asking the county to create a way to save national register properties in Williamson County. Right now, in Williamson County, you do not need a demolition permit. Anyone can legally tear down a historical resource like Beechwood Hall. I am asking you, as the mayor and county commissioners, at least to consider doing what Davidson County does and require a demolition permit with a waiting period so the community has a chance to try to save these historic homes. My family, we moved here from California thirteen years ago. We've made this our home. Honestly, at the time, I did not know where Franklin was. We came here, we heard about it, we came to check it out, and of course, like everybody else from California, fell in love with the charm and the historical homes that are here. I am passionate about history. I am passionate about the historic preservation and the resources, and with all the development happening, going on within our county, I am afraid we will lose these historic homes in our history. I thank you for your time.
For the record, what city do you live in?
Sorry, I live in Franklin.
Come to the podium if you could, just list your name and the city. We no longer need your address, but the city you live in. Next on the list, Mr. Ed Silva.
Evening, Commissioners. I've been a practicing attorney in this community now forty-eight years, and I've seen this community change dramatically, but the one constant is that it's maintained its identity and its character, and that has been a consequence of a community effort, a collaborative effort between government and private property owners and citizens. What concerns me this morning, I opened up the New York Times, and there was an article about what was happening in the Midwest, in that the property values were escalating so high that the per acre prices were getting so high that agriculture was now going to be lost. And think about that. I mean, that's the breadbasket that feeds us, and what's happening is that the farmers are in a dilemma. Should they till the soil and raise their crops or sell it to developers at some exponential value? In drawing a comparison to that, we witnessed that here in our community, and as a consequence of that, we had the Green Belt legislation, which was put in place so that we could maintain the agricultural character if that's what the farmers wanted to do and not be taxed out of their own property. And it was a special legislation that really worked. It allowed us to continue to have open space, allowed us to have agriculture, and it allowed people that owned these properties to be taxed at its use rather than at its market value. Because if those farmers were taxed at its market value, they couldn't operate their intended purpose. So I want to draw a parallel to what's happening here in our own community. Rudy Jordan and I started the Downtown Franklin Association, and the reason we did it is because this mass exodus out of downtown Franklin to go to the regional shopping centers to support their efforts. And as a consequence, that community effort resulted in what we have today. And I'm asking for a comparative overview of what we're doing today. Not Green Belt for agriculture, but look at this, if you would, to protect the buildings because we all know as the building values go up and the taxes go up, my own taxes have gone up exponentially, that you have to pass that cost on. So if you pass it down to the retailer, they're not going to be able to operate their shops, their margins aren't going to work, and we won't have a hundred thousand people coming downtown Franklin to look at what we have because we made a mistake and we drove downtown Franklin out of its own character. And so, please...
And remind us, are you in Franklin? You live in Franklin, correct?
I'm sorry, sir.
You live in Franklin? Your town that you live in?
I live in, I own that building, and that's in Franklin. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Brian Laster.
My name is Brian Laster, Franklin, Tennessee. And while I serve on the Wimbs County Historical Society's Board, I'm here tonight as a private citizen to support the fellow speakers who have talked about a demolition permit for historic structures in the national register and also for the state historic resources and to offer some proof of why that's necessary. So in the last six months, here in the county, we've actually lost the Fly Place, which was on Wilson Pike. We've also lost the Ann Moran House, built in the eighteen thirties on Moran Road. And in Hardeman Springs, which is near Triune on Highway Ninety-Six East, a two-story log structure within the last several years has been demolished and a replica put in its place. And now we have two other historic resource homes that are under threat, and one would be Beechwood Hall on Bear Creek Pike, and the other is the Thomas And the other is the Thomas Hillary House, Roberts House, which is on Highway 96 East. And it just shows you that with development, which we're for development, but in a smart way, that we have pressure on historic properties. And these are some of the reasons why we should do a demolition permit and some kind of waiting period in between. And I thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mary Brockman.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mary Brockman, Franklin, Tennessee, but really not Franklin. It's Williamson County, so I want to say that. I'm here on behalf of Historic Resources in Williamson County. You know that we are rich with history. And Williamson County, after 12 years as a county commissioner, I was proud to serve in the 9th District. I will say that Williamson County, we're a leader. We're the leader for the state of Tennessee in so many ways. I was so proud and excited when we really took the lead in rural preservation just three years ago. And that has made such a difference in terms of the county and what this community represents and the beautiful landscapes and the rural settings that people love and we want to preserve. I believe that Historic Resources are next. And I applaud Mary Pierce's idea. And I would love for someone to put it on as a resolution tonight to have, require a demolition permit for a national registered property in Williamson County. We know that there's protection in the cities. They have overlays. We do not. And it's just, you know, Beechwood Hall was the sort of the call to arms. But this will affect so many other properties, as Brian has suggested. My husband and I moved and restored an 1854 house that hadn't been lived in in 30 years, okay? It is a labor of love, but it is part of what makes this county so unique and special. Please, protect these resources because just giving, just having a permit, just a demolition permit and a waiting period can, it can give you that time to maybe set the pattern in another direction. Yes, you have property rights, but we, as a county, are reflected in this in so many ways. So please, consider that tonight. I don't know much about the tax situation, but obviously, I would support that as well. But I'm here, sometimes it takes sort of a pivotal moment to sort of say, we can do something. We're not, you know, our hands are not tied. It's one small thing, and I hope that can happen tonight. So thank you so much.
Robby Preston.
Preston, live in Leapers Fork area. Wanted to talk with you about Beechwood Hall. I think you have a card up there a little bit. These are cards that have been put together by tourism groups, some of the foundations. These have been on the street for probably going on 20 years. You can see there's a, there is a trail going around where you can take a tour. And this card has been for a long time in the stores in Leapers Fork. People come out to the area for our scenery, for our history, for the buildings that they see and the stories that they tell, like going to a museum. If you go to a museum, they have artifacts. The artifacts allow you to tell a story. And this is a beautiful artifact. If you haven't, if you're not familiar with this, maybe we're partial, but we think it's the most beautiful cultural landscape from the road that we know of in the county because you can see it from so many different sides. Of course, it has a tremendous history. It represents our Civil War history. It allows interpreters to tell the full story, good and bad, of who we are, our identity. Later, in the 50s, at the peak of his career, Hank Williams, first superstar of the Grand Ole Opry, potentially among the most influential people in the history of country music, chose this place at the peak of his career. Tim McGraw and Faith Hill have owned it for the last 15 years. And there is a crisis in the community where an individual has moved in and decided that out of 268 acres, this is the only place that the home could be built. So we're hoping to have, there is discussions going on with that individual, and we're hopeful about that. We're grateful for fantastic land use regulations. I believe they're the best in the state, very thoughtful. They, and so thank you for that. We're very grateful that the Land Trust for Tennessee started in the Leapers Fork area. And we have a lot of properties that have been put under voluntary conservation easements. And that adds to the fabric that makes our county so great. The big surprise is we have always trusted, we've always relied kind of on trust and common sense that people wouldn't come in and tear down a building like this. With people coming from other places with large amounts of resources, I don't think we can depend on that anymore. And so we are hoping that you will consider a historic zoning overlay. And I would say this, my wife and I talked about it. We may be the first in the history of Williamson County, this group, to actually come in and ask for more regulation on us. We own several historic houses, and we would ask you to regulate us more, okay? And if you do it, we'll be the first to volunteer to sign up for it. Thank you.
Rudy Jordan.
I'm Rudy Jordan from Franklin. Rogers Anderson said tonight, something brought you out of the woodwork. It's been a long time since I've been before the commission. I was the first director of the Heritage Foundation and then the first director of the Downtown Franklin Association and worked with Ed Silva and a number of others to try to bring Main Street back to what it could be. There were empty buildings. There were secondhand shops, pawn shops, pool halls. One or two other things that I'll tell you privately, but not publicly, about what was going on in Main Street. It needed a lot of work and a lot of focus. And now I would like to lend my support to creating this overlay tax district downtown because I think with careful consideration and guidelines, we can allow this area some tax relief. It has got to have some tax relief. I own 205 and 207 Main Street. And my taxes, unlike melon mushroom, they haven't appreciated that much. But they went from $12,500 to $30,600 in one year. In talking to other preservationists around the country, they said, you can expect an increase in an area like yours, but not in one year. Usually, you're given like five years, whatever you all deem to be fair. But I feel like that Main Street has gone from almost nothing to a very special place that really drives tourism in this city and this county and greatly affects our tax rate. It holds it down, and I feel like if we can have some kind of tax break fair, I love Ed's idea of comparing it to the Green Belt. If we keep our buildings and we maintain a certain tax level, it's only fair that if we turn around and sell it for a big profit, that we're going to be taxed more. That's totally fair. Thank you so much.
Lily Grace Ellenberg.
Hi, I'm Lily Grace Ellenberg from Franklin, Tennessee. And I'm here to speak in support of the lowering the taxes for the historic properties. For 40 years, the Heirloom Shop, a gift boutique, has operated at 404 Main Street in the heart of historic downtown Franklin. The building owner, Rose Wright, and her daughter, Jerry Lynn Martin, were the original founders of the Heirloom Shop. Placing the shop is one of the oldest in downtown Franklin. Now, my family and I are the third owners of the Heirloom Shop, and we are pleased to carry on the work of this special shop in a special place. The Heirloom Shop has been and continues to be a place where locals and tourists alike come year after year to shop, find special handpicked items, and leave with more than just a shopping experience. They leave with the experience of feeling, sorry, they leave having experienced this special feeling that is Franklin. Our customers come to Franklin not just to shop, but to spend time and, yes, money at many of the beautiful stores in Franklin. They ask for our recommendations for wonderful places to eat, local places to stay, and unique places to experience all that Franklin has to offer. It is quite a challenge to maintain a historic property. Everything costs more. And while I love the historic aspect of Franklin and the efforts to preserve the unique aesthetic of downtown Franklin, it is costly to have to follow strict guidelines that competitors in other parts of towns don't have to consider. Our small business, like every other small business in the country, was hit really hard as a result of the pandemic. We continue to face mounting challenges with increased costs for products of shipping and materials that we use on day-to-day basis. Finding and keeping qualified employees is a daily battle. The increased wages it takes to attract and retain the employees adds to the challenge. Frankly, the 42% increase in our property taxes this year was like adding insult to injury before we even fully recovered from the multiple hits we took during the pandemic. The property tax increase cannot simply be passed along to our customers. Our prices have already risen due to the increased cost of goods that we sell and wages for the local residents that we employ. There is a limit to the amount that we can pass along to our customers before it fundamentally changes who we are and who we help attract to downtown Franklin. We do not want to drive out the appeal that we and other small businesses like us, for everyone. We love that Franklin has become a hotspot for people traveling and moving here. With that popularity comes increased property values. But currently, being a longtime downtown business, one of the committed to staying and making Franklin even more desirable, it feels like we are being punished with a tax hike that unduly burdens the very people who help make downtown Franklin the jewel that it is, small businesses. Thank you so much.
Last speaker we have on our list is Tanya Henbry.
Good evening, I'm Tanya Henbry. Thank you so much for taking time away from your families this evening. You likely received an email with this in full detail, but I just want to say thank you to those of you who have responded. I am here to introduce myself as a tenant and building owner on Main Street. I own, my family and I live in Fairview and own a building at 234 Public Square. Onyx and Alabaster is my business. You may have heard of it. You likely bring your family down to this beautiful street that we all adore and why we all live in Franklin. So I hope that you will consider today the tax classification that we all long for, and I'm sure you've heard exhaustively tonight. We are so honored to be a part of the downtown district and are blessed beyond belief to have a business that has succeeded in a market around the world that is not. Year over year, even in the midst of COVID, we have had increase. And it's because of all of your decisions and the beauty that you've created here in Williamson County. Our business is tracking to do over $3 million on Main Street this year, which is just a miracle in my mind. I'm choked up by God's goodness. But I'm also overwhelmed by the increase of tax that we, as new building owners, have experienced. With property taxes and sales tax, my business alone will have paid a quarter of a million dollars in tax. The increase is triple of what it was just two years ago, which is in one person's annual salary. So for me, the thought of employing currently about 27 employees, to have to lay off one person because of the substantial tax is really hard as a mom, a wife, and all the things that I am, and a boss. So I'm employing you today to consider voting towards this because we all want to be here. We all love the charm that Franklin offers. And that's where we go when we have all of our guests in town for Thanksgiving in a couple of weeks. So if we want this to sustain and to be what it is that we love, we have to consider this topic. Thank you.
That concludes Citizen Communication. Thank you to all those who came to speak. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda is Communications and Messages. We have three proclamations tonight. The first one will be delivered by Commissioners Mary Smith and Commissioner Greg Sanford.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. As you know, Greg and I are the new District 5 County Commissioners, and it has been quite a year for District 5, especially when it comes to sports. So I am super excited to give out the first proclamation tonight to our Southeast champion, Nolansville Little League team. So here we go. Proclamation honoring the 2022 Nolansville Little League team as Southeast Regional Champions. Whereas, the Nolansville Little League team were the winners of the 2022 Southeast Region Championship with a record of four to zero. And whereas, the Nolansville Little League baseball team is ranked the second team in the United States. And whereas, the Nolansville Little League baseball team ranked the fourth team in the world. And whereas, the team was named the recipient of the 2022 Jack Loesch Little League Baseball World Series Team Sportsmanship Award due to the sportsmanship they displayed on and off the field. And whereas, the Nolansville Little League team members and coaches include the following, I'll start with the coaches, and I'll let the coaches take over. Coach Randy Huth, Mark Carter, and Evan Satinoff.
Jack Rhodes. Nash Carter. Kaz Lowe. Bo Daniel. William Satinoff. Charlie Mallon. We actually brought you guys some Fisher World Series autographed baseball.
Oh, my gosh. Awesome. Thank you so much.
And the framed autograph picture.
Oh, thank you, guys. We're honored. So real quick, I do have proclamation for each of the coaches. So I'm going to go ahead and give you those. And that one. And this is for you. Hold on, I've got a little bit more to say. Sorry, I had just one little thing to say, so I got to finish this up. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the Williamson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 14th day of November, 2022, hereby congratulates the Nolansville Little League baseball team for their outstanding season and for having secured the Southeast Region Championship and do hereby recognize the level of excellence exemplified by each of these outstanding individuals. Thank you.
And if Commissioner Herbert and Commissioner Hestery would like to join, Commissioner Sanford and Commissioner Smith, we have another proclamation, this one for the 2022 Page High School Girls Soccer Team.
Last year, the Page High School Girls Soccer Team won the state soccer championship for the first time in the history of Page High School since it opened in 1975. This year, they continue their legacy as champions by winning the state soccer championship for the second year in a row. The 2022 Page High School Girls Soccer Team became the only varsity team in any sport at Page High School to go undefeated and the first Page soccer team to win a district, region, and state championship all in the same season. Collectively, the team scored 102 goals while giving up 10 goals with a record of 23 wins, no losses, and two ties. 10 girls received all district recognition, including a district MVP title to Abby Thornton, goalkeeper MVP title to Gabby Rainey, offensive MBT title to Gray goalkeeper MVP title to Gabby Rainey, offensive MBT title to Gracie, is it Senjudo? Senjundo, and freshman MVP title to Reagan Vaughn. Five seniors and one junior from this year's team have already committed to continue their playing careers at the college/university level. The Page High School Girls Soccer Team members and coaches include, Coach, clap, I'm gonna let you read off the names. I don't wanna butcher them.
Gotta lower this a little bit. Seniors, Riley Kate Collins, Caitlin Davis, Riley King, Emerson Lad, Kate Nelson, Isabella Pillington, Gabrielle Rainey, Gracie Segundo, and Abby Thornton. Juniors, Anna Baker, Maggie Brizika, Breland Cotton, Maddie Farrell, Reagan Hamilton, Kelly Henson, Mia Johnson, Ella Wood, oh, yep, sophomores, Addison Baggett, Kyla Davis, Addison Duggar, Ainsley Hitt, Julia Osborne, Lauren Utley, Lachley Wally, Ella Wood, freshmen, Emma Baker, Taylor Burke, Emerson Flood, Azucena Gomez, Mia Goodwin, Addison Montoya, Lily Orr, Ashlyn Reitmeyer, Alexi Turnbull, Reese Van Hooser, Valentina Ventura, and Reagan Vaughn. Coaches, Dave Wasselit, David Kendall, and Booker Leach.
And then we have one more proclamation this evening. This one to be delivered by Commissioners Torres and Commissioner Williams.
So behind me and beside me is the Thompson family. As you can tell by the size of it, that if you've lived in Grassland for any period of time, there's a very high likelihood that you have had direct interaction with one of them, whether it be at the ball fields, at the schools, live in the neighborhoods, high likelihood. Now, I personally grew up with Matt, been coached by David in Little League, but here really to celebrate Glendra. You know, commonly, we do these proclamations. We celebrate excellence on the sports field, we celebrate excellence in academics along those signs, but you know, this is an exceptional excellence in the normal day-to-day. Glendra has been a bus driver for Williamson County Schools for 32 years. And the stories that have come out upon her retirement have been absolutely breathtaking. I want to share a couple of those stories, and then I'm gonna let Commissioner Torres actually read the proclamation. But this was from Dee Powell. When we first moved here, my oldest was having a hard morning. It was getting late, and we saw the bus coming down the street, so we rushed out the door and made it just in time. I waved and started back in the house. However, when he got on the bus, he started to tear up and told Ms. Thompson that he forgot to give me a kiss goodbye. She stopped the bus and let him get off and run to give me a quick kiss. So sweet, I told her I was so sorry to make her late. She said, "Don't worry, there are only little ones, and do enjoy it." From Lindsay Ball. Aside from treating all three of my kids like they were her very own, what she does for all any kid that steps onto her bus, she smiles and speaks to them every single morning and afternoon. She celebrates the fifth-grade riders every year by hosting a pool party at her house, which my two older kids still talk about. One of my kids wasn't paying attention after school and missed the bus. Glendra finished her route, then drove all the way back to school, picked up my one passenger kid, and brought them home to me. So much more to mention that she has done, but the main thing is she has protected, cheered on, forgiven, hugged, cared for, and loved on hundreds of children and their families. To know her is an absolute blessing. Every single person who does know her understands that we are all the lucky ones. Like I said, we take these everyday occurrences for granted sometimes, and these are the people that we entrust our children to. They get them to school and back and forth, and I think it's absolutely amazing how exceptional your service has been to our community, and personally, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Two quick things before I read the proclamation. Ms. Glendra was my oldest daughter's first bus driver when we lived in Cottonwood. So that was our first connection to them. And then my second connection to this family beyond Grassland and the baseball fields and golf and driving to West Tennessee with our boys to play golf is they were my second big sign during the campaign season on Hillsborough Road. So I sat in their living room and conned my way into letting them say yes to put a sign in their yard, but they were very gracious. So whereas Glendra Thompson is a lifelong resident of Franklin, Tennessee, and Williamson County, and whereas she attended the old Grassland Elementary School and graduated from Franklin High School, where she played basketball and was involved in several school activities, and whereas Glendra met her husband of 44 years, David, at Grassland Heights Baptist Church, where they still attend, and whereas together they have three children, John David, Tabitha, and Matthew, as well as 10 grandchildren who all live in Williamson County. And whereas for the past 32 years, Glendra has served her community by driving a school bus for Williamson County Schools, and whereas she began by driving bus number 45, the same school bus that her mother drove, and since that time, she has driven the same route for a majority of her career. And whereas each of her grandchildren, except the youngest, have had the privilege of riding on their GG's school bus. And whereas Glendra also has served her community as a Boy Scout leader, a Grassland Athletic Association basketball coach for her children, and has spent much of her time as a grandmother attending baseball, soccer, football, basketball, and volleyball games. And whereas many members of the community describe Glendra as compassionate, kind-hearted, and thoughtful, and say that she treats every child on her bus as if they were her own. And whereas parents of children in the community say that Glendra has, quote, "protected, cheered on, forgiven, hugged, cared for, and loved hundreds of children," describing her as a blessing to everyone, and has been, quote, "the hands and feet of Jesus," end quote, to so many kids throughout her many years of service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Rogers Anderson, as mayor of Williamson County, do hereby proclaim November 14th, 2022, as Glendra Thompson Day in Williamson County, Tennessee, and hereby encourage all citizens to join me in appreciation of her dedication to the children and her devotion to placing the children first throughout her 32 years of service.
Well, if my family had let me know ahead of time where I was coming, I would have been dressed a little nicer. But, you know, I just, thank you very much for this. And all I can say is I did my job all of these years, and I treated each child like I would want my children and my grandchildren to be treated. So thank you very much.
I'm not sure how anybody follows that. Mr. Mayor, you are about to be on deck. Before we get to the mayor, there are a few requests. We have a late filed resolution without objection we will hear. That's Resolution 112241. Don't want to disturb the picture here. Any objections to hearing 112241? Seeing none, we will add that one to the agenda. We also have two requests to move up resolutions. Resolution 112240 is the resolution regarding the historic tax relief resolution. The other is Resolution 1122-28. Are there any objections to move those resolutions up to the top of the agenda for those who have come to support that resolution? And 28 is the education impact fee. Seeing no objections, we'll move both those resolutions up to the top of the list. And with that, Mr. Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, have Phoebe come up and give us a snapshot of the county, the financial side. Can?
I, oh, sorry, is that better? Okay, so now I don't yell at you. There's a couple of things I'd need to address first that are a little different than what some of you may be accustomed to seeing in our report, but I do need to officially get these into the minutes. The first one you will find in your packet, it is called Report on Debt Obligation. I'll give you a moment to look for that. This report is to show that we did, on the 10th of November, issue the second part of the hospital intent to fund. If you'll remember, if you'll recall, Resolution 112123, last November, we had a not to exceed 150 million. That following December, we issued the first 75 million. And this is presented to you is the 63 million that we just issued this past, or this month, actually. And we did issue that with an interest rate of 4.1642. The second letter we are needing to enter into the minutes is from the Comptroller of the Treasury. You'll find a letter acknowledging where we had submitted for a purchase plan for lease, for lease financing. This letter will constitute the approval of the county, or to the county, from the local government finance for us to proceed and enter into that lease agreement. That lease agreement resolution will come to you tonight, later this afternoon. It's from the School Department for Apple Computers. The resolution is 11224. I think we have made the mention of this in several different meetings, that we are now required by the state to get permission from local government finance before we are even present to you asking for that financing agreement to be entered into. So this is the approval we did receive prior from the Comptroller's office, giving us the ability to do that this evening. The next thing I would like to talk to you about this evening is the education impact fee. So tonight, you will have in front of you the collections through September, so this September of '22. Our total collections as of September is $108 million. Of that money, we have already allocated $49,498,538. This evening, we are also coming to you tonight with two bond resolutions. Out of this, we are also asking to allocate another 15 million of these funds to go towards East Cox Elementary School. If you do see fit to approve that resolution and approve the 15 million for East Cox, that will bring our total new allocation up to 64, a little over, a little under $64.5 million. I know the question has been posed as to how quickly we're paying this down. I know you all are all aware, we have the five years in order to do that. If you will take a look at the first, and I didn't write this out, but if you take a look at the first fiscal year, 63017 through 63022, that number makes up $58.8 million. Of that, we have already approved 49.5 million. Tonight, we are coming to you to use and do a drawdown of another 15 million. So as you can see, once we do that, that will take care of those first four years of collections that we have so far collected. So we will also dip into the 2021 fiscal year collections of a little over $5 million. So if there is some concern, I just wanted you to point that out so that you can see that we are drawing that down, and we are allocating those funds, you know, on a timely manner. The privilege tax report for September is also in front of you. This is the normal report you see every month. You will notice that again in Spring Hill, we are facing another, I think we're up to 90 days at this point, without receiving a permit in the Spring Hill area. We are continuing to monitor that. We have tracked that and based on the fact that last year was kind of an odd year, and we had a lot of permits issued, but we still are on track for the average of the five years, last five years. But we are keeping an eye on that so that we can, you know, permits are down for the first quarter, but we anticipate that hopefully to settle out as well. The only other thing you will see from me this evening that's a little bit different, you will see that it is included with your resolution, 112119. Those are your bond resolutions. I have included a listing of what is included in those resolutions. So it is with that resolution, so as you get to it this evening and you see there'll be the breakout of what intent to funds are within those bonds that we are requesting and to get your approval. I did realize after review that I did not make one notation on that. Page High School, we have two intent to funds that are included in this bond for the general obligation bond this evening that we are proceeding to you. However, the resolution for 9223, we actually, the intent to fund was 26.5 million. We are only asking for this current year of 8 million. So I just wanted to keep that in mind, that we do have a remaining 18.5 million that is left to fund at a later date. So if there is any other questions?
Any questions for Phoebe Riley? I don't see any, thank you. Next, we have Jason Golden, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commission. When I watched the conversations and the recognitions that you all presented to so many folks, it just reminded me of the value of people in our community. I want to thank you all for your leadership related to that. Our vision statement says that Williamson County Schools will provide a supportive environment that challenges students to excel in academics, athletics, and the arts. And I know you know that, and I appreciate your efforts. We have a number of items before you tonight. Many of those are related to that continued pursuit, because we know success is tenuous. And so the two biggest items from a funding standpoint are related to retention of our staff. We have a proposal for a 2% raise that reflects the decision the County Commission made somewhere at the beginning of the budget year for county government. We waited because we wanted to make sure we had sufficient funding in our funds to cover that. Second big item will, in essence, give an additional five days of paid holiday for our 10-month and 11-month employees. That includes bus drivers, that includes special education teachers assistants. One big reason for that is because during the holiday period, they currently have five paid holidays throughout the year, which means they will get paid for two days, New Year's Day and Christmas Day, when their January 15th paycheck comes, and that's about it, depending on how the calendar falls. it, depending on how the calendar falls. Our, our board voted to approve an additional five holidays that will be stacked during that winter break, so that they can have a decent paycheck to catch us up a little bit on that window of time where they don't have pay. Retention of staff, again, that effort that we continue to go through, and the county government goes through as well. So have a couple other items, I won't speak to those specifically, but if you have any questions, certainly be happy to answer them.
Questions for Superintendent Golden. We do have a question. Commissioner Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason, just a quick question on the, the resolutions related to the raise and the days off. Is that going to have a carry forward impact in the next year's fiscal budget? And what I'm getting at, is it self-funded as it stands today, or is that something that's going to carry forward that we have to look at next fiscal year?
Thank you for the question. We haven't worked on next year's budget, but we do anticipate that these will be incorporated into the budget in, in the following years. I will tell you to put a little bit more detail related to that. Our current budget anticipated a certain amount of sales tax revenue. We are basing this recommendation to you on what we have seen the first quarter. 4% in July, 2% in August, and 2% in September, above our budgeted amount, largely because of inflation, we believe. So yes, we do anticipate that we will likely include these two pay items in future budgets.
Any other questions for Superintendent Golden? Not seeing any, thank you. Next, we have a report, Hospital Report, Mr. Phil Mazuka.
Mr. Chair, County Commissioners, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide you a report. I'll give you some brief updates of the hospital, and then Mike Genesey, my CFO, will provide you the financial report. So I'll give you an update on the project. For our ER, the ER project expansion is progressing as planned. Our exterior finishes are underway, and glass installation started this week, so we're anticipating to have the dry-in before Thanksgiving. I walked through the ER today, and most of the framing is up. We're putting our headwalls up in our clinical patient areas. And one thing I'll say is, I think that you'll be really proud when this is done, of the size of the registration and the waiting area, that will be more conducive to comfortable wait. We still expect to open the new part of the ER in May of 2023. Our postpartum area is also progressing as planned. Most of the framing is complete, and it too is expected to open in May of 2023. For our West Tower project, we've been using our new ambulance canopy for the last few weeks now. We tore down the old canopy and removed that, and now we're starting the site work for the West Tower expansion. The site work will continue until early December. I previously told you that our steel erection for the West Tower was going to start on December 27. At this point, it looks like the steel erection will start December 12, so I'm really happy that we're moving a little bit ahead of schedule. For other major projects, we have a new MRI that was delivered last week, and that's being placed in the bone and joint facility, and that should be operational mid-December, and that will relieve a lot of the wait time it is to get MRs today. We also have a new state-of-the-art cath lab that's being delivered in December, and that should be operational by mid-January. The last thing I want to provide an update on was flu. So the country is seeing a higher level of flu than it's had in the past, and there are seven states designated by the CDC as having high influenza, and one of them is Tennessee. Hospitalization rates with this flu are trending a lot higher than flus of the past, so it's, it's a little worse than it has been over the past several years. And just to give you an example, last week, we had 79 positive flu tests, and those 79 tests, 13 of those patients were hospitalized. So again, a very high hospitalization rate. So with that, with those comments, I'll turn it over to Mike for our financial report.
Thank you, Phil. Good evening. I'm Mike Genesey, the CFO. You have in your packet the, I'll do the, the key stats and so forth first. This is September's month, guys. You can see our, our stats are just about where they have been the last few months. You can see the run rate there. We were just slightly over budget for, or over our, our run rate for the admissions, both adults and Peds, for surgeries and for the ER visits. Those stats generate a little bit more revenue for us. We had 26.7 million in net revenue, 26.5 million in operating expenses, and our net non-operating revenue expense was about 600,000, giving us a net income of $815,000. From a cash standpoint, you can see that overall cash, we've got 205 days of cash on hand. If you exclude the bond reserve money that we have, the debt reserve money that we have, we have 95 days cash on hand. We have a covenant of 90, so we're over that. And then the big one is from a debt coverage ratio, we have a covenant of 1.5, and we're running at 2.38. So summary of where we are. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Genesey or Mr. Mazuka? I see none, thank you. I know we have another report coming up from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but before I do that, I think I may have cut off the mayor earlier. Mayor, did you have anything else? No? Okay. We have a report now from the CEO of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and requesting to speak before you give your report is Commissioner Steve Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many of you know I have the pleasure of serving on the Board of the Convention Visitors Bureau. I'll talk about that a little more when we talk about the tax resolution later. But it's a pleasure now to introduce you to Maureen Haley Thornton, the CEO of the Convention Visitors Bureau. Many of you have met with her. If you haven't, I urge you to set up a meeting, but Maureen has a short report on the effect of tourism.
Thank you all. And as Steve mentioned, my name's Maureen Haley Thornton. I'm the president and CEO of the Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau. A lot of familiar faces, but some folks that I have not spent time with. I joined the organization in July of 2021, and have spent the last 15 months getting to know the community, our organization's history, work, and working on a strategic plan for how we will continue the momentum and positive impact of tourism on our community. But one of the things that is the most fun to do about my job, and what I'm actually here to do today, is share with you the annual economic impact figures of tourism on, on, for Williamson County. We have a great partnership with the Tennessee Department of Tourist Development, which is run by Commissioner Mark Izzell, and they, among other things, provide for us an economic impact report that covers the impact of tourism on the county. And I have, for each of you, I'll leave behind a couple of things, but just want to run through some highlights for you. In 2021, which is the last full year, we have this information on visitors spent $1.04 billion in Williamson County, billion with a B. That equates to $2.86 million per day in direct visitor spending, and that means that tourism generated $34.7 million in direct local taxes. As a result of the taxes generated by this activity in Williamson County, each household in Williamson County pays $1,111 less in combined state and local taxes. Tourism also directly employed more than 7,500 people in Williamson County in 2021. And our visitor spending, to put it in context for you, in 2021 was 35% higher than 2020, of course, during the height of the pandemic. You all likely remember the first half, there was still some struggle in recovery, particularly from tourism as relates to business travel, but really strong, strong rebound happening. And looking at our hotel occupancy for the first part of 2022, we're actually trending ahead of where we were in 2019. And so we're really encouraged by the strong recovery and the work that our team has collectively done to really push that forward. And so, as I mentioned, I've got a couple of things I'll leave behind with you, but just wanted to close by saying thank you to all of you for your continued support of tourism, the allocation of hotel occupancy tax that goes to fund a portion of the work that we do, and the positive impact that has on Williamson County. And for those of you that I haven't spent time with yet, excuse me, anyone I haven't spent time with yet, I've got my card attached to this information that I'll leave behind, and I'd love to get together and, and talk to you more.
Not on, not on this, but for Mayor Anderson.
Actually, I do have a question, Ms. Thornton. When you look at tourism, and I understand that the new report is it's $1,100 per household that it brings in on, if you aggregate that over the county, and I also understand a lot of that comes from downtown Franklin. When you guys look at that tourism spot or belt, is it the downtown Main Street solely that they're coming to? Is it the residents? Is it a, is a conglomeration, a, a marriage of the two that, that brings the average tourist out?
Yeah. Sure. Well, we have research that says that downtown Main Street is the number one driver of tourism for the county. I don't think probably most of you are not surprised to hear that, but we, we do have research that shows that. We also invest in research that allows us to understand how people move around the county and what it is that they experience. And so of the people who visit Main Street, they spend an average of, I think, two and a half days in the county, and, and about three hours on Main Street. So obviously, they're spending their time and their money in a lot of other places when they come, and, and enjoy our beautiful downtown as well.
Commissioner Williams.
Mayor Anderson, I'll ask you a question. So I know, growing up here, our, our community's always had a watchful eye towards historic preservation. I feel like in the past, collective social influence and handshake agreements have gone a long way to protect a lot of those resources. And I think even when we did the land use plan a couple of years ago, that, we, we put some intent in there around utilizing potentially historic overlays and such as tools to protect those resources going in the future. But I feel like here, in recent history, with a higher frequency, we're running into these issues. I mean, not only the, the property tax resolution that we're going to consider here in regards to the, the taxes, but, you know, you had developments in Nolanville with historic structures. We have historic trees that we're talking about. We have, you know, potential historic overlays on certain corridors in the unincorporated county. Would, what are your thoughts around starting a task force to actually look at putting some teeth and some definition to a historic overlay in other tools, whether it be, you know, demolition permit, you know, with an eye towards maybe something that we can do immediately versus something that really needs to be flushed out and really thought about and making it work within the community?
Well, I think, first of all, Commissioner, that it, the whole issue that you've brought up, all of those different issues you've brought up, does need to be studied, and it needs to have a group of people. We've been very successful over many years of finding and isolating individual problems or issues we may have, and try to find resolve for that, resolution for that. And certainly, dealing with all of those comments that you've made, you can put together a group of people through a task force, give a definition of what we're wanting to accomplish, and then setting that on a positive path to come back and report to the commissioners. We certainly could do that from, from our office and direct that. I'm sure there will be a lot of people that would want to serve on that, but you'd want to have both pros and cons. I think also the issue of possibly we need to be dealing with the unincorporated area. You mentioned Nolanville and some of the other issues. Your jurisdiction doesn't always extend over into the municipality. So I think you could deal with the unincorporated portion of it. You could deal with the issues like you've had with the Beach Creek Home that's been brought up. You could deal with so many other things in our county. And if you, if you all want me to do that, set up something like that, we can get that going. Take a while to get this, the people, we're to let folks that are interested in serving on that, and, and try to get a mixture of that, just to find what we're trying to accomplish when we can get there.
Do we need a formal action by the Board to get that, or is that something that we can?
No, I think, I mean, if you, if that's something the commission can, to say you'd like to have it, I mean, if, if that's what you all want, we'll try to do it. I just need some guidance of exactly what you're wanting to accomplish that. So give yourself some thought, and, and if you all want that done, we'll, we'll get embarking on it. It does take a, a few days and weeks to get something like this put together. I won't have anything to report back in January, but give it a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Just a follow-up question to that. In, in regards to this Beechwood Hall, that, that's a great question Commissioner Williams brought up, and, you know, I'm, I'm for task force or study groups, whatever, but in my experiences, those things take time. It could sometimes be years before we get any kind of really legislative teeth into something around here. But, you know, and I'm not familiar with what's going on at Beechwood Hall, but is that something we might need a little more immediate than some type of, of a task force resolution? And, I mean, do we, do we not have anything in place right now that would protect a historic home if somebody wanted to tear it down?
Well, I'm going to let legal counsel, either Jeff or Bobby, and they don't really deal with it on a day-to-day basis. That's something that Christie handles. But in our subdivision regs, we do have some safeguards against things like this happening. But in, Joe was here, I just now thought Joe could address what we do have outside those subdivision regs that we've got. Joe?
First of all, Commissioner, and good evening. First of all, we protect historic sites during the development process. In other words, if you come in and say, "I want to build a subdivision," then we come out and do that. We do not have a historic overlay, and frankly, I've done a little research, in order to have a historic overlay, you have to have a historic zoning commission, as a certain amount of people that, different, let me see, you have to have an architect, historic organization, a number of people like that. We have been operating, I would say reasonably, I'd say very successfully with the protecting historic sites, and this is the regulation we've had since 1988. I can't speak to Beechwood. We didn't find out about any activity on Beechwood. I know that there has been some talk that if we had a demolition permit, we could have stopped that, not without a historic zoning, because it is a private property issue, and we have to tread very carefully on those. Nobody is relishing the outcome of this, but to your point, it will take some time, because we will have to make up our minds how we want to handle it. And not only that, we lack one important thing that also the city of Franklin doesn't have. We have two areas arguably right now that an overlay might work, Deepr's Fork and Spring Hill. Other than that, the historic sites, the one that we, that we protect, they are scattered all over the county, about 85 of them, and they're not in the fabric of any real community. You know, what I know about the particular case at point is on a large piece of property, a rather remote area of the county. I'm, I'm trying to, all I'm saying is, I don't want to, and I did cut you off, it'd mean to, I'm saying is I do want to manage expectations a little bit. We'll be happy to look at it, but I do know that there, you know, there are legal requirements under Tennessee state law that have to take, be taken into account.
Under the impression, if a, if a property was under the National Register, that there were certain protections to that, is there, is there no, just general?
National Register, generally speaking, is something somebody did to themselves. And frankly, when that particular law came in place in the late '70s, there were a lot of tax credits that were attached to renovating those properties. That's not a tax deduction, that's a credit, and that was a good motivator to get it going. I'm sure that gave quite a bit of momentum to some of the activities in downtown Franklin over time. But it's on the register at this point in time, we will, you know, we have an opportunity to, through the development process, to slow that down. We have one pending right now. We have one pending right now with some battlements over in the triune area where there's a pretty good-sized historic site on a property. And we're working with the developer to preserve that site within and without that particular proposal. But we're not, we haven't got our first blush at it yet.
Questions for Mr. Horn or Mayor Anderson? I see none. Any other reports from any other county offices? Seeing none, we'll move on the agenda. Before I do that, I do want to mention the bunt cakes that we all got on our desk. That's courtesy of the University of Tennessee Ag Extension Service. I want to say thank you to them, and I want to ask Commissioner Sean Iola not to take mine. No? Next, we have elections and appointments. First up is the Beer Board. A three-year term expiring 11 of 25. Term expiring Tommy Randolph, nomination Tommy Randolph. I'll entertain a motion. A motion from Drew Torres and a second from Greg Lawrence. Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor, please signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. It's not loaded yet? Oh, it's a voice vote, okay. Was not told that. Is it a voice vote? Okay. Will the second one be a voice vote? All right. Then, in that case, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Second board is the Hospital Board of Trustees, filling an unexpired term, expiring five of 23. Terms expiring are Dana Osbrooks and the late Bert Chalfont. Nominations are Judy Herbert and Paul Webb. I have a motion from Commissioner Jones and a second from Commissioner Williams. Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We have one abstention. Commissioner Herbert, we have two abstentions. Commissioner Herbert and Commissioner Webb both abstain. Beyond those abstentions, the motion passes. Onto the consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? I have a motion from Commissioner Ricky Jones, a second from Commissioner Steve Smith. If there are no questions and we're ready to vote, if you're in favor of passing the consent agenda, please signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes. There's no unfinished business, so we are on to new business. We did move those two resolutions to the front. We will start with a resolution, Resolution 1122-28. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to amend and implement an education impact fee rate and education impact fee schedule pursuant to the authority granted by the provisions and in accordance with Chapter 120 of the Private Acts of 1987, and to be assessed and collected in the manner as defined in the previously adopted resolution of 1116-6 related to the findings and acceptance of the Education Facility Impact Fee Study dated October 11, 2022, concerning residential development on the need for new or and/or expanded education facilities. I have a motion from Commissioner Herbert, a second from Commissioner Hester. The budget task force was 5-4-0 against. Tax study was 4-4-0 against as amended with a clerical error of a date correction. And the Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against as amended with the same clerical error of the date correction. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
We're required every three years to reevaluate the education impact fees, so this is our three years. Some of the fees did go down. Some went a little up and some went, the smaller homes went down.
Questions? Question from Commissioner Hester. Does she request to speak?
Sorry, I think my button did that. Beg your pardon.
Problem. No other questions, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Next resolution is 1122-40. Resolution of support for state legislation to create a tax classification bracket for certain commercial and residential historic properties. I'll entertain a motion. Motion from Commissioner Streser, a second from Commissioner Iello. The tax study committee was 4-4-0 against amending to defer to January's commissioner meeting. The Budget Committee was 4-4-0 against with one abstention, also deferring to, voting to defer it to the January commission meeting. Any, we have explanation from Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight to speak to this issue. I want to especially thank Heidi Hood from the Downtown Franklin Association and Kell McDowell. They've done a lot of work on this from Williamson, Inc. And my friend Tim McLaughlin, who's here tonight from the Equalization Board. And Tim is really the reason that we're voting on this tonight because he came to me last year, I guess, after the downtown merchants came to the, or building owners came to the Equalization Board. And then, and he sent me some of the statistics on what happened to them in the last reappraisal. And the average reappraisal, the property reappraisal in Williamson County was 35% at the last reappraisal. The average increase for the downtown properties was 200%. So it was over six times what the average was for the county. And that translated into an average property tax increase of 153%. And some of them got even more than that. You know, some, as you have heard tonight, their taxes went up, you know, to the tune of, you know, $50,000 to $100,000. And as Brian Preston said, these are, most of the merchants down there are on triple-net leases. So if a tax increase goes, taxes go up, then that's passed on directly to the tenant immediately. So the building owners by contract, you know, are passing, basically passing those on to these merchants. And so the obvious concern is, as you've heard tonight, the downtown Franklin area is a very unique setting, and it has a very unique aesthetic to it that is extremely attractive to the tourists that come to our county. Most of the, most of the people who come to our county, they will spend some time in downtown Franklin because of its uniqueness. And so essentially, downtown Franklin's kind of like the golden goose for tourism in Williamson County. And it's because of the local business owners that some of you who you've heard from tonight that have poured their blood, sweat, and tears into those unique boutique shops down there. And that's what gives it its special aesthetic. And if those people can't afford to be down there anymore, then we're going to end up with a bunch of national chains or attorney's offices. And it will destroy the unique flavor of what we have there. So obviously, I don't think any of us want to see that. So the question was, you know, what can we do about it? Well, the answer is, right now, nothing. Legally, we can do nothing about the tax increase. So I started talking with counsel, and we initially started trying to think about what we could do. And obviously, if we're going to do anything, it has to be done on a state level because state law will not allow us to change the property taxes, unless you have some type of overlay. And the green belt is a good example of a special designation because we all recognize farmers are a very unique subset of property owners, and they represent a lot of value to our community. So that's why we have the green belt. So can we do something like that for the Downtown Franklin Association and the building owners down there and other historic properties within Williamson County? And when I started researching this, I found that other states do have some historic overlays, particularly North Carolina. Wake County, North Carolina, has a historic overlay that's giving the property owners, and that's the Charlotte area of historic buildings, some significant release to their taxes. So what the resolution is basically doing tonight is to ask our state legislatures to craft a bill to pass at the state level that will give us a legal framework to be able to come back and sit down and craft something for Williamson County. And that's all this is doing. It, by design, is a general resolution. It's not specific. We don't, we didn't intend to put a lot of specifics in here because those, the specific details of whatever we do will be worked out if we get the green light from the state to do something. Right now, we can't do anything. So all this is doing is asking our state representatives to give us the legal framework to do this. I've talked to Jack Johnson. I've talked to all of the other state delegation members in the House about this from Williamson County. They're all on board with it. Jack Johnson has assured me that whatever we do is going to be something that Williamson County asked them to do. The state, Jack's not going to sponsor a bill that we aren't happy with. So if, whatever they do is going to be a bill that we approve of. So they're not going to, they're not going to make a bill that's going to have a lot of extra stuff that we aren't intending in the bill because, you know, they represent Williamson County. So they're going to do what we ask them to. So what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, tonight, though, because I know this has been through a couple of committees, and it's been voted on to defer. And I think the biggest issue is the issue of residential properties in the resolution. I would like to propose an amendment that we strike the words "and residential" historic properties and just create a tax classification bracket for certain commercial historical properties. Strike out the "and residential." And if we can do that, I would like to vote on that. And if that is the big objection in this resolution, hopefully, then we can vote on the rest of the resolution and then pass it on to our state representatives.
I have a proper motion. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Streser. There are some people who have requested to speak, but at this point, you would need to speak to the amendment, correct? So Commissioner Mason, do you wish to speak to the amendment or to the overall resolution?
The overall resolution.
Commissioner Iello, do you wish to speak to the amendment or the overall resolution? Commissioner Smith? Resolution. And Commissioner Sanford, to the amendment or to the resolution? No questions to the amendment? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? This will be a vote of yes to amend the resolution to remove the residential historic properties from the Resolution 1122-40. A vote of no would be to keep it. If you are ready to vote? Need to add the language in? Okay, we have the amendment on the screen. Are we ready to vote? We do have a question to the amendment now. Commissioner Tunocleth.
All through this amendment, it states residential. I mean, all through this resolution. Are we going to change just the headline? Or are we going to change the whole resolution?
That would be clarification needed to be made by Commissioner Lawrence.
Other, where it says in "community," to residents who depend on... Oh, residents that reside.
In the second whereas is the only other residential reference I see in a quick scan of the resolution.
And that actually sounds like the residents that live in, I guess, there are some buildings that have both. There's commercial and residential in certain properties. If a building was to be part of this because they're a commercial building, then they're going to get the tax break, even if it has a residential property in it.
The caption would read, "Certain commercial historical properties." The recital talks about historic properties of businesses and residents that reside in them. That would be up to interpretation. There's nothing in the resolution part that now therefore be resolved that specifically references residential property.
In Section 1 and 2, should it have to say historic commercial properties? Or is it already just saying historic properties? Because that opens it up for... To me, it opens it up for more challenges on that. I'm not an attorney.
The resolution itself, you know, would be clear if it said "commercial properties." I don't know how that'll be interpreted, and I don't know what the legislation would look like. Quite honestly, you have criteria here that you're asking for, but we haven't seen the legislation as to what that... That's going to drive what is covered or not.
When the state makes this decision, it's not our hands.
Correct.
Chairman, if I may say, I want to underscore what I said earlier that when we take this to the state level, they're only going to craft a bill that meets the requirements that we give them. If we tell them we only want it to apply to commercial properties, that's what they're going to do. That's what they're going to put in the bill. So again, this is just a general resolution asking them to craft a bill. Once we sit down with our state delegation, then we'll hammer out the bill, and it will say exactly what we want it to because they're representing us.
Commissioner Lawrence, do you want to restate your amendment to remove all references of residents from the resolution?
Okay, so we can strike that second paragraph where it says, "and residents that reside in them." Just strike that section right there.
We have a few people that wish to speak. Commissioner Mary Smith, do you wish to speak to the amendment?
Actually, just a quick question. Why is it we want to remove the residential portion of it? Have they not seen the same amount of property tax increases that the commercial have?
They have, but they aren't income-producing properties. So this would be, this tax overlay would be to benefit income-producing properties, which are the properties that, in general, the tourists are coming to visit when they go to downtown Franklin.
I would just add to that, my love going downtown Franklin and actually touring the historic homes that are down there, too. So just want to add that also.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes. If we do vote on this resolution, you said the state will craft a bill. Will that come back before us? You say they want to know that we are happy with this. So once we pass this and it goes to our state legislators, are they going to come back and say, "Williamson County Commissioners, is this what you wanted back in November?" That's my question.
They have to file the bills by February 1st, so we would have to see if we could get the bill crafted before our January meeting. But there's also a placeholder... But there's also a placeholder option. They could place, put a placeholder bill in place where they would work on the language in the bill. So I think they could actually, counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, they could actually file a bill with a placeholder for February 1st.
They could file a caption bill and then file the actual body of it subsequent to February 1st. But you're correct, in order for the commission to review it, they'd have to draft it and have to come back to you in January or February. Obviously, the session is usually over in April, so there's gonna be a limited amount of time to get that done. If that's what you wanted to do, then you can ask.
That's, that's a little bit unusual on general legislation for a county legislative body to review the legislation itself. The resolution as drafted asks for them to pass legislation that includes an opt-in for the counties to choose to opt-in or not after it's passed. I'm not sure if that's sufficient for you or not.
I have a proper motion and a second for the amendment. I'm sorry, request to speak, Jennifer Mason.
As Chair of the Tax Study, since this is, I wanted to shed a little light. We did vote to defer simply because of all these questions that are being asked. Those in the Tax Study Committee felt that the spirit of the resolution is there and we want to do what we can to help, but our concern was the broadness and sending it to the legislator without a little more detail. What is a historical property? Is it residential? Is it commercial? Is it both? What do we want it to look like versus giving them a blank piece of paper and saying, hey, in general, this is what we want? So as a tax study, we did vote to defer to try to put a little more meat into it, a little more direction for our legislators because ultimately, once it gets in their hands, it's really out of our control and however it comes out of the legislation. Now, at that point, we have the option to opt-in, of course, but we wanted to just give a little more direction. And so again, just to provide some light as to why the tax study did vote to defer.
Questions on the amendment? And is the amendment loaded the way you would like it to read, Commissioner Lawrence? Okay, are there any other questions on the amendment? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Voting on the amendment. If you're in favor of the amendment, press your yes button. Any opposed, your no button. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Eighteen yes, four no.
Amendment passes. So now we're back to the resolution as amended. May I retract? I meant to hit the abstain button and I hit the wrong button. If you could mark me, Mr. Whitby, as an abstention, I would appreciate it. Now we're back to the resolution. First person requesting to speak is Mr. Aiello.
So I am in support of this important first step in providing relief both to our historic buildings and their owners and frankly, our community at large that benefits from them both. And I do applaud the efforts of Commissioner Lawrence and the concerned citizens that have brought this to the commission here tonight. And it is important that this is just, just the first step. We're asking the state to look at creating new legislature, legislation and providing a mechanism that our county, and not just our county, but any county in the state can avail themselves of if they find themselves in a similar situation that we have had the benefit of enjoying for the past few decades of the economic growth and support that the areas have given the county as a, as a whole. These issues you have heard here tonight are not matters that we can simply wave a magic wand and fix, but by voting for this resolution, you will be telling the concerned citizens that you do hear their concerns and that you are willing to ask the state to look at this issue that is frankly, not a Franklin issue, but a historic property issue. As you heard here tonight, these building owners, they're not all downtown Franklin residents. Yes, the buildings are located here for the majority of, of that. It's not a District 11 issue. It's not a District 10 issue, but it's Williamson County as a whole issue with owners across the county, then employ, employees from across the county. And importantly, the tax dollars brought in to these areas go directly to the bottom line of this county commission. It affects our ability to fund not just schools, parks, things of that nature, but allows us to bring in that money and to grow, develop the community that we want to have here tonight. Ultimately, for those of you that are on the fence about passing this resolution, I encourage you to voice your input and concern to those state representatives who will be crafting this legislation and ultimately be bringing it to the state as a whole to vote on. Be a part of the conversation and do involve yourself in this process as it moves forward. And again, ultimately, this does come back to the county as to whether we want to opt-in to whatever the state decides to grant us an ability to, to create our own destiny on, on these tax areas. And I will say that this is not simply an issue we can look at as a vacuum of let's try to put more meat on the bone to come back to in January. First of all, taxes are coming due next year. And secondly, the timing of the state legislature on when they review these resolutions and when they might come back to our county to review, this is still gonna take months. What we're asking for is essentially a first step in the right direction to start the conversation with the state, to then come back and look at at the later date of the county as to whether we believe what the state has put for us is good for the county and the residents. So I do encourage you to, to vote in favor of this resolution.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence, I want to thank you for putting the effort behind the resolution. Personally, 100% in agreement with the intent, but I, you know, I know in Budget Committee, we discussed this and in my personal opinion, is in alignment with Commissioner Mason and that, if, from my understanding, filing deadline at the state is in, like, early February, very late January? Is that roughly correct? So we have time to take a look at this and potentially flush this out with a little bit more detail and, you know, with an eye towards a couple of things. You know, I, I'm sure personally, we can all think of half a dozen scenarios that will occur with this type of resolution that we probably want to put some left and right lateral limits on and guide them in the right direction. But then two, I think it's also very important that this is seen as a joint thing from both the City of Franklin and the county. And so this is kind of our first pass of a resolution from the county, but if we can get input from the city and have potentially a resolution, resolution that can be voted on at the city and the county that mirror each other, it shows a joint effort right there right out the gate. I believe that's gonna be very important in getting something ultimately passed at the state level. So personally, I'm in support of deferring this until January as long as it's not in jeopardy of missing filing deadline, but completely in agreement with the intent. And just that's my stance at the moment.
Commissioner Sanford?
Commissioner Lawrence, thank you for putting forth the time, effort, and energy I'm of the opinion that this needs to be deferred. I don't like the name "historical properties." I wish that we could have some time and put forth a tourism zone and we can implement these tourism zones throughout the county where needed. I don't know that every single property along Main Street is a historical property. So if we, if we just stick to historical properties, some of those building owners on Main Street may not be able to take advantage of what they might be able to take advantage of. I found out about this resolution through an email and a phone call from Cal, you know, eight days ago, nine days ago, whatever it was. We have committees for a reason. Tax Study Committee, those individuals, are of the opinion it needs to be deferred. I'm on the fence with this. I appreciate you taking residential out. I don't support that at all, but I would like to see tourism zones and just give us some more time to work through this in committee. I'm not on the Tax Study Committee, however, I'll be there to give my input, but I'm of the opinion this needs to be deferred and give us some time to, to figure this out and do it smartly.
Commissioner Smith? Steve Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I like Commissioner Mason and Commissioner Sanford tend to favor deferral at this point. I do think taking the residential property out helped, but, and I, I like Commissioner Sanford's idea of identifying tourism zones around the county. I mentioned before, I serve on the Convention Visitors Bureau Board, as does Commissioner Webb and Commissioner Mason. You know, I serve as treasurer of the Board and we were quite surprised last year when we got our appraisal and it had gone up 300%. We were fortunate and the CVB occupies the Ben &amp; Jerry's for you older folks, the Pig &amp; Peach building. And, and we have several tenants. We were fortunate enough to allow those tenants to pay over time and not hit, hit them with the immediate increase. So it was a, it was a shock to our budget and we had to reevaluate some things, but I think we've got, we've heard green belt mentioned here tonight. That's a, that's a possible example of a mechanism. We also have the property tax freeze that we offer senior citizens. Some of the property owners here may be hoping for a rollback of property taxes. I don't know that that's a possibility, but I think a freeze while you own the property, once you sell, the property tax rolls up to the current amount is, is something that we could put in the resolution as an, as an example of something that might work. As of now, I will support deferral.
Commissioner Herbert?
My concern is this isn't just Williamson County property taxes. There's a lot of City of Franklin property taxes, as Commissioner Williams stated, and Franklin Special School District. The school district's taxes are almost double what the city is, and I feel like we need an answer if those other two are gonna give some, I guess, a little bit on before we, we shouldn't have to be giving it all. The others should have to give some of theirs to, if you're asking this. And I think before it's deferred, I think we need an answer on what the other two, City of Franklin Special School Districts are gonna do also. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
I ask Commissioner Lawrence, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I've heard deferral, 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 but I haven't heard a motion for a deferral. If we come back, Greg, in January and we're all for this, would you have a problem with us deferring it till January and it go through the proper committees? If so, I'll make that motion to defer. I'd like to hear from Commissioner Lawrence, though.
Yeah, okay. And Commissioner Jones, I, I think what we'll end up with is, is basically the same thing either way because if, if we pass this tonight, then, then I think the Tax Committee has, has volunteered to be the ad hoc task force to craft the bill or help the legislators craft the bill. So, but what we would do is we would sit down with them sometime in December to, to craft a bill at the state level that we want and then let them take it on to the state. In, in response to the Franklin issue, Franklin is actually voting on a resolution that's almost verbatim like this one on, I think, November 20th, I believe, is their, is their next meeting. And I've talked with them quite extensively with several aldermen over there and we, we think there's a lot of ways we can, you know, creatively get together and work together to, to kind of jointly attack the issue and, you know, keep downtown Franklin the, the thriving place that it is today. So we've got a lot of, but, but, you know, I know they brought it up the other night and, and several of them said, well, we heard the commission deferred it, so they, they may defer it waiting on us to vote on it, and if we defer it waiting on them to vote on it, we're never gonna vote on it. So I think we've got a lot of support for this. I mean, I think on this commission, you know, from what I'm hearing tonight, I think we could craft something in December to send to our state legislatures, skip an extra step of voting on this again and saving us some time. And also, I think that sends a message to Franklin that we're serious about moving forward with this and they will probably support their resolution and then we can invite them to the meeting in December. Well, we're gonna have to be with the state legislatures in December.
We do not have a motion. I believe it's...
No, I, I made a question. Yes, I did make a question, but he answered my question. He did answer my question, but I will make a motion to defer to January.
Proper motion to defer, proper second. Any questions on the amendment to defer? David Landrum, do you have a question, question on the deferment?
I want to go on record, I fully support the concept of this resolution 100%, but I want to get it right. I want to send the right message to the state. I fully believe that we have to do something to protect our downtown area and the outline areas, but I, I don't mind meeting. I'm on tax study. That was our choice to defer at this time, but we've agreed to work in December and I'll be happy to work in December because I want this, and I won't vote to defer if I don't think we can get it on the calendar as soon as we can with the state. And those dates, somebody would have to help me with, but I know the January calendar, we need to be there. And I don't want this board to sit around here and say, meetings, 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 and not get anything accomplished because I really want to see this go forward, but I do want to have the language where we're very comfortable with it and go from there. So right now, I think I would defer, but with a caveat that we get on the state's agenda. Thank you.
Commissioner Aiello on the motion to defer?
Thank you. I just want to say that for those that are considering deferment, I certainly understand the concerns that have been raised. I, I personally do plan on attending the December meeting if this is deferred and would encourage anyone who votes for deferment to also be at that December meeting. I enjoy these conversations. We're getting good information out there and this is what a good back and forth looks like, but a lot of that also happens in committee. So I'll be there in December. I encourage each of you who votes to defer to also be there in December. Thank you.
I haven't spoken to the amendment. I know I've talked a lot, but I didn't get to speak to this. So I just, just one more point here is just this timeline with the state is, they're, they're working right now on their bills for the next session and they only have, they have a limited bandwidth of the number of bills they're gonna bring. Everybody's gonna bring a few bills. They're not gonna be able to get everything they want and they have to prioritize. So they're doing that right now and they're gonna be doing that in the whole month of December. If we wait till January, the first meeting in January, I think, is gonna be a night tent, something like that. And then, then we have to get on their calendar to sit down with them to draft something. If we, if we wait until January, there's a possibility that the priorities could have shifted with our, our delegation and there may be too many bills on the docket and they may not be able to get this one on. That's a possibility. I think if we vote on this tonight, it sends a message to them and it sends a message to Franklin that we're serious about moving forward. Again, I, I think we're gonna end up with the same bill regardless of whether we vote on this tonight or in January because we're gonna sit down with the delegation and tell them what we want and they're gonna write it the way we want it. So at the end of the day, you're gonna end up with the same bill. So I would, I would vote not, I mean, I would... So, I would vote not, I mean, I would plead with you not to defer, just so this sends a message to everybody, all the players, that we want to move forward with this, and we're gonna set the date in December, and we'll have to connect with them, obviously, and the City of Franklin, to sit down and talk about it. It just gives us a lot more time to work on it if we vote on this tonight.
Any other questions on the motion to defer? Seeing none, is it loaded on the screen? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to defer signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twelve yes, nine no, one abstain.
Or passes. I'm sorry, the motion fails due to a lack of a majority.
The county commission rules define a majority as 13 votes, not 50 percent plus one. It is 13 votes to carry any vote on the commission floor.
So, we are back to the main resolution as amended. Anyone wishing to speak to the main resolution as amended? Commissioner Williams.
Here's my concern, and this is ultimately why I voted to defer. Words mean things. I learned that in the Marine Corps a long time ago. Right? If we read here, it says, one, it talks specifically about the county, right, with no mention around city, right, which goes back to, this really needs to be a joint effort, right? We have terminology that includes residential, commercial, historic, right? We're talking about maybe renaming things to touring, you know, tourism zone, right? Words mean things, right? And the way it's crafted now, I have a concern about. I don't think it fully captures exactly what we want to send up. I mean, the way it's written now, I would vote no on this resolution, and then we bring back a new resolution in January with the wording, you know, carefully crafted out the way that we want it intended, right? And so, you know, with that, like I said, I have full support of the intent of what we're trying to do here, and plan on, really, no matter what we bring forward in January, making sure it's on the docket for our state legislature. But I just, I feel like this was rushed and brought forward, and doesn't necessarily capture what we're truly making, you know, we're not very careful in the wording in this document right now. I would like to see a little bit more uniformity in what we're doing with the city, all right, and doing it in conjunction, hand in hand. And I know, talking with Paul at committee, the tax study committee has volunteered to be that task force over the next couple of months to really deep dive on this and bring that wording and make sure it's crafted correctly. So, I would still say vote no on it, since we're not deferring it, so we can bring back a new resolution that's carefully crafted, and we can vote for it in January.
Commissioner Mason.
I echo the same concerns as Commissioner Williams, and I've heard Commissioner Lawrence say, "Well, we'll meet with the legislators, and we'll flush out what we want." I'm still unclear what we want. I know the spirit of what we want, but what do we want? Do we want it to be commercial? Do we want it to be residential? Do we want it to be just downtown? Does it extend to different properties? What kind of tax break are we talking about? How does that then affect the average household, and how much tax increase does that lead to them? And so, that is my concern. It's not the spirit of the resolution, and I haven't heard anybody speak against the spirit of the resolution. But even if we pass it right now with the understanding we'll meet with the legislators, who's meeting with them? When are we meeting? Is it a public meeting, and are we gonna hash it out? And that's what I, part of the reason for the deferment was to hash that out. And so, I hate to say it, but I agree with Commissioner Williams. I can't support it right now, because I don't even know what we're asking the legislators to do.
Lawrence.
Counsel, if we've... I haven't spoken to the resolution.
You introduced it and gave the explanation.
Okay. Could I ask a question? Counsel, is, if we voted no on this tonight, does that mean we can't take it up again for a year?
No, it does not.
It does not?
No, it does not. Commissioner Lennox.
I hear what everybody's saying, and I agree. I think there's way more detail to hash out. I am a small business owner, and a tax like this, in a very, in the winter months, when your business is already reduced greatly because of tourism going away, for the most part, I mean, Franklin downtown is a little more busy than my small business out in the boonies, but it does impact you, and it is a great burden to have an additional tax. So, I will speak to, I've lived it, I understand the, probably a lot of the concerns these small businesses have, and I don't even know what your burden is personally. You know, I have enough in the winter months to keep my business going, so I think it is important that we consider this. I don't know, I'll ask counsel, because I'm fairly new at this, do we have the option of having a special session and us get together? I mean, is it so against rules, or our regulations, or however we govern ourselves, that we can't get together in December and make this a priority so that we can move this forward as Greg is wanting, and get some detail? I mean, I don't know, but I think it's worth us talking about, because I am a small business owner, and the next two months are a struggle, and I have to manage and budget all year to plan for those quiet months. So, I just say, I think it's scary that if we lose our opportunity to get in front of the state, and we have to wait another year, this could have a great impact on Franklin. So, I'm sad enough.
There are procedures for calling a special meeting. The mayor may call a special meeting. I believe the chairman can call a special meeting, and I forget, there may be a percentage of the commission that could join in a call, but I'd have to look at the rules to tell you what that was.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clifford.
Well, this will be the first time I've spoken at a county commission meeting, but I thought it important. In my day job, I have the privilege of working with the General Assembly, and I think what we're asking them to do is to consider it. You know, filing caption bills is normal course of business for the General Assembly. I think that's kind of what we're doing here, filing a caption bill, continuing to work on it, to get the details going before the end of session, when they will take a vote on it. I think that's something they're very comfortable with. I'm very comfortable with our state delegation. We have some of the best representatives in the state. They love our county. I know they will work with us, but I think this lets them know that we're serious about working on it, and it helps them prioritize. If we delay for months, they might not give it the focus, because they're unsure of whether we will ultimately consider it in any detail. So, I think we lose a little bit of prioritization, and I think timing's crucial. I think if we delay it, there's a strong likelihood that it won't happen this year at all, and then those folks that we're seeking to protect will bear another tax burden over this next year, and we may get to it the following year. But I think timing's crucial. We're already up to session. I think filing a caption bill is just something I'm very comfortable with, and I think that's why I voted clearly no to defer it, but it just doesn't bother me to work on a caption bill with our state legislation.
Commissioner Sanford.
Thank you. I've known Jack Johnson for a long time. He's a friend of mine, and if I was a betting man, if this county commission, and I've spoken to him about other resolutions, if this county commission brought forth a resolution and approved it, whether it be now, whether it be in January, I'd almost be willing to bet my life that Jack Johnson's gonna take that as a priority and see to it that he works on that as a top priority. He represents this county. So, I don't think it's a timing issue whatsoever. As it sits, I can't support this the way it's worded. I'm not on the tax study committee. I volunteered to come in in December, anytime, anywhere, anytime, doesn't matter, to help work on this. I was a small business owner my entire life, born and raised here in this county, supported the businesses on Main Street my entire life. I'm just not happy with this wording. And as it sits, I can't support this, so...
Any other questions on the resolution? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? This will be voting on the resolution as amended, removing all references to the word residence? Is it loaded on the screen? It's not letting you load it? Did we alter it too much? Having some IT difficulties here? A roll call would take as long as... We'll have to have people raise hands and count them. Oh, he's ready? Without objection, we will...
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so the resolution as amended is loaded. If you are in favor of Resolution 112240 as amended, press your yes button. Any opposed, your no button. Commissioner Tunncliff? Want a voice vote? All right, we're gonna have a voice vote, but just before that, anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twelve yes, nine no, one abstain.
Fails due to a lack of a majority of 13 or more. At this time, if there's no objection, I'll call for a 15-minute recess. We will reconvene at exactly 9:30.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Not a lot.
But it failed.
It failed.
Additional paid holidays for 10 and 11 month full-time classified staff for the 2223 budget year. Motion from Commissioner Smith, Steve Smith, Commissioner Megan Guffey to second. School Board was 12-4, 0 against. Education Committee, 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee, 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Jones.
Yes, these additional holidays will be helping the classified staff. Their paycheck in January is very, very low, and with these holidays being stacked there, it'll help them out greatly at that time.
Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1122-4, resolution approving lease purchase agreements for Apple computers for digital learning. I'm sorry, I must have picked up two of them by mistake. Come on. 1122-3, my apologies, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners approval of $2,440,250 for the purchase of buses for the 2223 school year. Proper motion made by Commissioner Tunocleth, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. School Board, 12-4, 0 against. Education Committee, 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee, 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Jones.
Yes, every year, we have to have a turnover in buses. A lot of times, it's state mandated, and this is just the amount that we're replacing this year.
Questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Now, Resolution 1122-4, resolution approving lease purchase agreements for Apple computers for digital learning. Motion from Commissioner Tunocleth, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. School Board, 12-4, 0 against. Education Committee, 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee, 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Jones.
Yes, these are Apple computers that are used by CTE programs such as television technology and several of the programs that we have in the high schools.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Mr. Chair, we, a lot of us can't see to make motions. We can vote, but we can't make motions, so we may only have a few people here that can make motions.
I've noticed that earlier as well.
No, we don't even have the opportunity.
No, it's not even there.
Yeah. We'd just let the people that can make motions make motions? Okay.
Without objection, we can go to voice.
I did.
Another couple of resolutions, if it's still acting up, let me know, and we'll go to voice motions in seconds, so that everybody has a chance. That resolution passes. Resolution 1122-6, resolution accepting a donation of $5,000 from the estate of Mr. Don Dicey, Don Michael Dicey, on behalf of the Williamson County Animal Center, and appropriating and amending the 2223. They are sticking together. My apologies again. Resolution 1122-5, resolution appropriating and amending the 2223 Community Development Department budget by $25,000 to provide for the expense of on-call engineering services incurred in association with the review of large conventional low-pressure pipe, LPP, and modified low-pressure pipe septic systems. Revenues to come from unincorporated county fund balance. Proper motion from Commissioner Nation, seconded by Commissioner Tunocleth. The Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This $25,000 is for on-call engineering services due to the septic has a shortage of employees and with experience to do the reviews, and this will continue until they have those vacancies filled.
Questions? None, are we ready to vote? If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Are we missing one? Commissioner Mary Smith? There we go. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Passes. Now, Resolution 1122-6, resolution accepting a donation of $5,000 from the estate of Mr. Don Michael Dicey, on behalf of the Williamson County Animal Center, and appropriating and amending the 2223 animal care budget by $5,000. Revenues to come from donations. Motion from Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Nations. Public Health Committee, 5-4, 0 against. Budget Committee, 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
Very generous donation from Mr. Don Michael Dicey, which is a longtime resident of Williamson County, to the animal control for $5,000. He has passed away from this as his estate.
Iola.
But he's a longtime Williamson County resident and a lovely man who played organ at the St. Paul's Episcopal Church for years. He always had a bevy of animals running around his place at Leapers Fork, and his presence will be missed, but his legacy goes on through this gift to the animal center. So, thanks.
Questions or comments? Further questions or comments? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
Yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1122-7, resolution accepting a donation on behalf of Williamson County Animal Control and appropriating and amending the 2223 Animal Control budget by $5,000. Revenues to come from donations. There is a typo on this one. We're removing capital projects from the title. I have a proper motion from Commissioner Tunocleth. We have a second from Commissioner Nations. Public Health Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
$5,000 very generous donation in honor of Edie Hoback, and it's for a catio? Isn't that like a patio for cats? I think.
Questions on the catio? Seeing none, if you're in favor of this resolution, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Oh, that is Greg, not me. Okay. We'll have one voice vote, but go ahead and record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby. You need the voice vote first? Okay. How do you vote, Commissioner Sanford? We got a yes. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution 11, I do have a cord here if you need it. You need a cord for your battery, or?
No, battery's fine.
Okay. Okay. Resolution 1122-8, resolution appropriating and amending the 2223 County General Budget by $74,086.90. Revenues to come from victim assessment fees. Got a motion from Commissioner Torres, seconded from Commissioner Tunocleth. Law Enforcement was 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee, 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sanford.
These are revenues from the Victims Assistance Program, $74,086.90, and they're requesting to expend that out for the victims of crime assistance programs, 74,086.90.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Commissioner Sanford, how do you vote? Oh, you're in, okay. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1122-9, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant contract with the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Corrections Institute, and appropriating and amending the 2223 Sheriff's Office budget by $9,769. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Motion from Commissioner Nations, seconded by Commissioner Mason. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is grant funds for the Sheriff's Office for the purchase of training equipment used for training corrections and jail employees.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Passes. Resolution 1122-10, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee, Department of Safety and Homeland Security, and appropriating and amending the 2223 Sheriff's Department budget by $39,999. Revenues to come from federal through state grant funds. Motion from Commissioner Torres, seconded by Commissioner Tunocleth. Law Enforcement was 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sanford.
This is a grant to provide training to increase the capability and knowledge, including but not limited to standardized field sobriety testing, traffic stops, radar training, and officer Spanish communication.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 111211, resolution appropriating and amending the 2223 Juvenile Services budget by $43,000. Revenues to come from participant fees and detention contracts. Proper motion from Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Tunocleth. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
Revenues for juvenile services that they get from their fees and detention contracts, they use that for other expenses as detention, as drug supplies and drug screen supplies, not drugs, drug screen supplies, and they've already collected over $60,000 this year from detention contracts and drug screen fees, so.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Passes. Resolution 112212, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to sign a contract with the State of Tennessee Administrative Office of the Courts on behalf of the Juvenile Court and amending the 2223 Juvenile Court budget by $2,500. Revenues to come from state grant funds. Motion from Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Megan Guffey. Law Enforcement was 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sanford.
This is a grant from the AOC, which is the Admin Office of the Courts to Juvenile Court. It provides funds for a monthly free legal clinic and free mediation services in the civil cases.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112213, resolution appropriating and amending the 2223 Health Department budget by $424.33. Revenues to come from grant funding. Motion from Commissioner Tunocleth, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. Public Health was 5-4, 0 against. Budget was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is grant funds for the Health Department to provide child safety seats.
Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112214, resolution appropriating and amending the 2223 Parks and Recreation Department budget by $30,000. Revenues to come from participant fees. Proper motion from Commissioner Torres, seconded by Commissioner Tunocleth. Parks and Rec was 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
Participant fees, money for $30,000 at the Performing Arts Center, and it'll be used for the expenses for the Performing Arts Center.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112215, resolution appropriating and amending the 2223 Parks and Recreation budget by $46,300. Revenues to come from participant fees. Motion from Commissioner Torres, seconded by Commissioner Nations. Parks and Rec Committee, 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee, 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
Parks and Recs will now be doing the Nolans for youth basketball, so these are the fees for that, and also, it is to pay for the scorekeepers and officials and the maintenance and uniforms for the youth.
Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? If you're in favor, signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112216, resolution appropriating and amending the 2223 Parks and Recreation budget by $39,433.56. Revenues to come from donations, I'm told, a total of three donations. I have a proper motion from Commissioner Tunocleth and a seconded by Commissioner Torres. Parks and Rec was 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is another Parks and Rec revenues for $39,433.56 from the Community Youth Association's Performing Arts and Camp Well, and it'll be used for the expenses for those programs.
Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112217, resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners appropriating $750,000 to the Solid Waste Department for assistance with relocating the material recycling facility. Revenue to come from American Rescue Plan Act funds. Motion from Commissioner Webb, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. Municipal Solid Waste Board was 4-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
Chair, I'm addressing this because this is an allowable expense under the ARPA Act and dealing with solid waste, because during the pandemic and any future pandemics or emergencies, we will have people staying at home, and they'll be generating more trash and more recycle. I would defer to Mr. MacNolan, who's here in the audience, and Commissioner Jones, who sits on the Municipal Solid Waste Board for any other questions.
Questions for either of those gentlemen? Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112218, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Military and Tennessee Emergency Management Agency and appropriating and amending the Office of Public Safety 2223 budget by $144,275. Revenues to come from Homeland Security Grant Funds. Proper motion from Commissioner Smith, Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Tom Tunocleth. Law Enforcement was 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee, 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sanford.
Resolution just offers the mayor to go into an agreement with Department of Homeland Security and Tennessee Emergency Management for training for domestic terrorism, including nuclear, biological, and chemical weapons.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112219, and this one goes with 112220. We'll take them one at a time, but, and then you have, you have an assertion with an explanation on the next two resolutions. 112219, resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of not to exceed $50,100,000 of general obligation public improvement in school bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of debt services on the bonds. Proper motion from Commissioner Steve Smith, seconded by Commissioner Tom Tunocleth. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is for, to the bonds for these capital projects that we've already voted on. Part of it is for school projects, emergency services, and the Bethesda Rec Center for a total of $50,100,000. We have previously voted on all these projects, and this is just to fund them.
Any questions, Commissioner Torres?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this may be for Phoebe. Thank you for the explanation that you put in the packet. There's one line I, that's 5.4 million from, I think it was the July meeting. Provide any details on that?
That one is Resolution 7222, and... That is actually for education, capital needs. It included the Technology Department, and then also for $680,000 for just general purpose capital, but that is a school capital projects.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
18 yes, 4 abstain.
Resolution passes. The companion resolution to this one is Resolution 112220, resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of not to exceed $79,700,000 of county district school bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee, providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of debt services on the bonds, and allocating educational impact fee collections to defray public improvement expenses. Motion from Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Guffey. The Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
...for almost $79,000, and they're all for the schools. There was East Cox Elementary, that $15 million, that that was taken out of the impact fees.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Yeah, correction, it's $79 million. All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
18 yes, 4 abstain.
Resolution 112221, resolution appropriating and amending the 2223 General Sessions budget by $6,000. Revenues to come from probation fees. Motion from Commissioner Torres, seconded by Commissioner Nations. Law Enforcement was 6-4, 0 against. Budget Committee, 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sanford.
So, this was requested by Veterans Treatment Court. People pay the probation fees, revenues of $6,000, and they're requesting to expend that out for evaluation and testing, $6,000.
Questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112222, resolution appropriating and amending the 2223 County Clerk's budget by $60,000. Revenues to come from reserve account. Motion from Commissioner Tunocleth, seconded by Commissioner Mason. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
This is the county clerk, the fees they've received, and they're gonna spend it on some computer furniture and printing equipment.
Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112223, resolution to authorize the Williamson County Clerk's Office to write off the attached list of checks. These are bad checks that came in, and I have a proper motion from Commissioner Jennifer Mason, seconded by Commissioner Steve Smith. The Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
$3,633.88 of bad checks that they've tried to collect and have been unable, and this is to write them off.
Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Guffey? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Those who are unable to make a motion or a second? And have you tried, have you tried logging out and logging back in?
Yes, completely signing out. I just, I just, yeah, close the app and then sign back in. I just need to make sure so I can report it to the company if it's still not working.
It's all on this side of the room?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, Landrum doesn't count.
It's the aura.
Yeah. Do we want to go to voice vote to make it fair? Not voice vote, but voice.
I'm not sure you'll be able to vote, though, if you don't have...
They're able to vote.
I understand that, but do you have to have it to allow the vote in general to proceed, is my question? I think you do, too.
Okay.
So, else they can mark the voice votes as the motion and second, which I do not know.
We will work on those technical issues for the next meeting. For this meeting, we'll have to continue with allowing those who are able to make their motions and seconds, do so, and we are all able to vote. And what resolution are we on now? 112226, okay. Resolution to adopt the provisions of the Jackson Law. Proper motion from Commissioner Torres, seconded by Commissioner Mary Smith. Municipal Solid Waste Board was 4-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Jones.
What the Jackson Law is, it makes it so that if anyone wanted to open a privately-owned landfill within the county, even in municipalities, they would have to get approval through us, and so, this is to, and Max here, if there's any other questions on this, but it's really to make sure we don't have private landfills open up in the county.
Questions on this resolution? This resolution will require a 2/3 majority vote. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whidby.
22 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112232, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a long-term lease agreement with the Vulcan Construction Materials LLC. Now, I'm not getting my... Okay, here we go. Motion from Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Tunocleth. The Property Committee was 3-4, 0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4, 0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Landrum.
Yes. This authorizes the Williamson County Mayor to execute a long-term lease agreement with Vulcan Construction Materials LLC for the lease of real property located on the map, 90 parcel 6.01, for the extraction of an aggregate... 90 parcel 6.01, for the extraction of an aggregate base construction materials.
Commissioner Hester.
I yield the floor.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Streser.
He turned it off. He turned your mic off. Is it flashing?
No.
Sorry about that. We had a chance to discuss this in the Property Committee, and I know probably everybody hasn't had a chance to really kind of dive into this yet, but I think it would behoove us to spend some more time and some more due diligence on this. This is a contract that starts out with a five-year term, but it can auto-renew for up to 40 years. This mining site's about three-fourths of a mile underground. What Vulcan would like to do is to go horizontal with this. So as you look at this, you're looking at possibly mining for up to 40 years horizontally under the property. There are companies and consultants that can help commissions just like us, family-owned businesses, when they're looking at mining contracts, to really appraise the value of the opportunity. It's my understanding we haven't had an independent licensed consultant really give us a good idea of what this opportunity looks like, so I want to make sure that we're getting the full value from this. And quite frankly, we're not in a hurry with this because there's really nothing pressing for us as accounting at this point. It would also, I think, be important, too, at this point, to look at what would the environmental impact look like. I've had some people comment that there have been concerns with the current jail, that maybe there's been some damage from blast with that. So this is not a small undertaking. I know it's late at night. I know we've been through a lot. We've been through a lot of resolutions, but I'm gonna put a motion on the floor to defer this because I think we need to take some more time with this. I think we need to get some good, independent consultation on this entire issue.
Have a motion to defer. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Lennox. Any questions on the motion to defer?
As a procedural matter, is he deferring to a specific time, or is he tabling?
So tabling would be indefinitely, and deferring would set a specific time.
Correct.
So if you're gonna defer...
There is no motion to defer without a time set to it. It becomes a motion to table at that point, and it would have to be removed from the table. If you're deferring it to January, then the motion should state you're deferring to January, or February, or March, or whatever that may be.
Okay. I think probably a deferral to February would give us enough time to go back and look at that, and would that go back to proper committees at that point? Okay.
The motion has been changed to deferral to February. Does the second still stand with Commissioner Lennox? It does. Any questions on the deferral? First one is Commissioner Williams.
I'm not sure if this is a question for council or mayor. I know we had a lengthy discussion in Budget Committee around this and around some of the revenues that the property would generate. It's next to a quarry. It's about 40 acres. You're right, it's horizontal mining that goes into it. And we had quite a bit of discussion around environmental impact and that type of deal, but I guess I would like to know what mechanisms we used to evaluate what we looked at in committee, if, other than... I'll just leave the question open.
Commissioner, if you would allow me, we've got some Vulcan folks here that can probably address some of your questions. This was an attempt, we have done longer leases, as long as these, we've had. This is just an attempt to get more revenue coming into our county, other than always looking at property taxes, and this was one of the ways. We started on this journey about two, two and a half years ago. Bobby's worked through all the legal with people, so if you would allow me, the Vulcan folks are here, maybe they can address some of the questions that you have specifically about some of the ways to do it, and I heard the comment made that we need to defer, we need to do an environmental study and all of that. I don't agree with that, but I think it's fine to express your opinion, but this is one of those things they're already doing. They're just moving over into property that we would never use. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, my name is Dick Hall. I'm the land manager for Vulcan. I cover about 10 states for Vulcan. I've been with the company about six years, and I've seen hundreds and hundreds of these leases. I've negotiated dozens of them myself. Now, I'd like to say that most of the leases are above ground, and I can tell you emphatically, without any hesitation whatsoever, that you're getting a fair market value for the lease. If you step back and look at it from basic financial, a basic financial perspective, where else are you gonna go and get a 5% cost-free return on your money with zero risk whatsoever? And when we talk about a fair market value, we believe that we're the only ones here, the only company that can commercially, viably get to the rock, and as such, there's no comps that you can pull. But when we're looking at, again, when we're looking at a 5% cost-free return on your money with zero risk, I think that there's not a market in the world where somebody wouldn't say that that's a good investment and that's a good return on your money. As far as environmental issues go, unless there are federal permits involved, we're not obligated to do an environmental impact study, but with that being said, we do an extreme amount of due diligence when it comes to environmental controls, and we would treat this property no different than we treat any property, any of our lessees property. We've got contractual provisions in place that indemnify the county. We're taking the property as-is, where-is, from a liability perspective. And again, you know, whether it's before, during, or after, we, the controls that are put in place and the amount of regulatory oversight that we get, I think you can go to bed at night feeling very, very comfortable that, from an environmental perspective, we're gonna give you your property back, you know, just the same as we got it, undisturbed. In regards to the long term, I can understand that that may seem like a long term in the grand scheme of things, but the amount of capital investment that goes into these projects is great, and it's just the standard custom and practice in the industry that these leases go out 30, 40, 50 years in order to entice entities such as ours to attempt to extract the resource.
Follow-up, Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, I guess, just real quick, Bobby, were you the one that worked on this? Just real quick, can you speak to indemnity language, being held harmless for any environmental impacts, as well as some specifics around auto-renewal terms? Because I am always a little worried about auto-renewal, typically around notification timelines and that type of deal. Can you give us some specifics on that?
Sure. I'll address the indemnification first. The indemnification clause we have in this contract is very broad. It covers just about everything that has anything to do with them using our property, so it is extremely broad. They accepted it. I said, "Okay, thank you." On your second issue, it is a 40-year term, and it is automatic renewal. And again, it's because of the investment that is going to be taking place for them to do the work. There are provisions that we can use to get out of it, but, like you said, it isn't automatic, and I'm not sure what to say about it. I mean, you're right, it's five years, and then it's automatic five-year terms.
Do we have termination rights at the five-year marks?
No, but we do have our routes that we can take to terminate it.
Question from Commissioner Sanford.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. Does it, will it cost the county if we want to get out of that lease? Will it cost the county money to get out of that lease?
My fees, probably.
Okay. Mayor, second question, again, this is not my expertise whatsoever, and I appreciate Vulcan being here, but my question's for the mayor. I don't know you people at Vulcan. I assume that you've gotten an outside opinion as to this is a good deal, because I have no clue what it costs to mine underground.
I have an opinion from the legal side that it's been negotiated in good faith, and they've assured me it's good.
Okay. Lastly, for Todd and the sheriff, do y'all have any damage to the fire station over there that you know of, Todd? No? Okay. Sheriff, do you have any damage from your building? Because we need to keep that thing alive of another...
I've been there 30 years, and there's been a lot of crashing, and a lot of glass, and I think we should do it one day, or start a jail project, and it's... I can't imagine that much.
Okay, thank you.
Sub-Commissioner Mary Smith.
Thank you, and I think it's actually quite in line with what we were seeing when we were at the jail on Thursday. I would be interested in deferring, just so we could actually have some structural, independent structural engineers take a look at it, simply because we've got a $300 million Triple J project that's gonna be right on top of those lands that we're gonna be building on, and so I think it would be worth the time, just to make sure that if there is the potential of any damage being done, that we look into that before we enter into the lease long-term.
Commissioner Graves.
Mr. Chairman, this question is for the gentleman from Vulcan, if I may. So you said a cost-free 5% return. We talking 5% on the value of the land, 5% on what y'all take out, 5% over the life of 40 years. 5% can be a lot of different ways. Can we quantify that?
It's a great question. What we did in this instance is, it's not very novel, but you don't see a lot of leases in this part of the country that are like this. Most of the time, you'll see a lease that says, "I'm gonna pay you 10 cents a ton," and it'll stay at 10 cents a ton for the 35-year term, and so as inflation hits, you're actually degrading the value of the royalty over time. So what we've done here is we've attached the royalty to our average sales price, so that every ton that goes over the scales, if we get $10, y'all get 5%, cost-free 5% of that. If we get 15, if we get 20 over the years, as the price goes up and up and up, our price goes up, y'all's price goes up as well.
Okay, so 5% of y'all's sales volume?
That's right, per ton, yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
I'm curious, what kind of money are we talking about revenue-wise, or do we have projections of what we're expected to receive revenue-wise with this?
We've done some back-of-the-envelope calculations based upon previous sales, what we think the sales are gonna be in the upcoming years, and we think the number will fall somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000 a year, probably around $350,000 a year.
Is that our revenue, our 5%, or is that yours?
That would be your revenue.
Any other questions on the motion to defer? If not, are we ready to vote? We're voting on whether or not to defer Resolution 112232 until February. If you're in favor of that deferral, press your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
8 yes, 14 no.
Back to the main resolution. Any questions on the main resolution? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of Resolution 11?
We're not loaded yet.
We're not loaded yet, sorry. Now we're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Streser? There we go. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
18 yes, 4 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112234, Resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning Rule 5.4, debating the subject.
I know it's getting late. We have several department heads that are still here. Can we skip, or move to the end? Resolution 34 through 38, take up 39 and 41, so everyone that's here can leave, because those resolutions that we'd be moving to the back really just contain discussion among board members. I know General Helper is here on Resolution 41, and Resolution 39 has to do with the Sheriff's Department.
Without objection, we have a request to move Resolutions 112239, 112241 to our current place in the agenda. Are there any objections? Seeing none. Resolution 112239, Resolution authorizing Williamson County to accept a donation of two storage containers from the city of Brentwood and the Brentwood Police Department on behalf of the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. I'll entertain a motion. Notion from Commissioner Graves, seconded by Commissioner Nations. Law enforcement was 6-4-0 against. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Sanford.
City of Brentwood is donating two storage containers for the Williamson County Sheriff's Office to be used for storage of gun rage equipment and supplies for law enforcement purposes.
Questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Onto resolution, resolution passes. Onto Resolution 112241, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the state of Tennessee on behalf of the District Attorney General for the 21st Judicial District in Tennessee regarding leased office space in the historic courthouse. Proper motion from Commissioner Tunocleff, seconded by Commissioner Graves. Budget Committee was 5-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Herbert.
Agreement for the District Attorney General to lease the space in the courthouse for the purpose of the victim-witness interviews.
Commissioner Mason?
I would point out, General Helper is here if there are any questions. I would like to clarify, my understanding of this is not for the purpose of victim-witness interviews. It is considered more of a safe place for victim and witnesses to wait while awaiting their case. So, for example, if they're called as a witness in a trial, it gives them a space where they can sit without having to see the offender walk back and forth in front of them in the lobby, or if you're trying a case with a minor child, a six, seven-year-old victim, they have a place where they can sit and color, and they're not actually sitting in the courtroom. So the purpose is not for interviews, per se, it's to provide them a warm and welcoming place to wait for their turn to go into the courtroom.
Herbert.
I didn't press anything.
Any other questions, then? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Commissioner Mary Smith? Oh, there we go. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
22 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Somebody tell me where we are. 112234. Okay, back to Resolution 112234, Resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning Rule 5.4, debating the subject. Proper motion from Commissioner Webb, seconded by Commissioner Mason. Rules Committee was 5-4, one against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
I think the resolution lays it out. If you have, well, I do. It's on page eight of our rules book, and so this is a change that we voted on the... Excuse me, I gotta get, I'm past my bedtime. I gotta be getting my eyes open here. And I'm sure I'm not the only one. As you can see here, this requires a two-thirds vote, and the changes in here shall require a majority vote for a call.
This only requires a majority vote because it's the November meeting, and you're changing the rule. If it were not in October or November, it would require a two-thirds vote. This would change the calling of the question from a two-thirds vote to a majority vote in your rules, but this would pass with a majority vote. And it is too late.
Question from Commissioner Sanford.
This resolution, frustrated is an understatement. Each one of us was elected to represent the citizens in what district we live in. By doing a two-thirds majority, if two-thirds of this county commission thinks that it's gone on long enough, then I'm okay with that, two-thirds. A simple majority, I think, is not fair. It's late. We all have jobs we have to go to, kids to get home to, whatever the case may be. I am dead set against this. I think we're doing the citizens an injustice. If you vote for this, it's my opinion, we were elected to do a job. If we have to stay here all night, all day, I'm going to be right here with y'all. It's very frustrating to me why this board would vote to approve something, to shut somebody down. We're going through very trying times coming up ahead of us. We're a billion dollars' worth of debt, and more to come. I think we owe the citizens of this county to stay here as late as it takes, to get through whatever issues we're going to get through. And two-thirds, in my opinion, should be the controlling factor, not a simple majority. There's too much at stake. We're not playing checkers up here, we're playing chess with millions upon millions of dollars. And it frustrates me that this rule is trying to get changed to a simple majority. I urge all the commissioners up here to attend the committee meetings. I've only been at this three months. I've tried to attend every single committee meeting. I've learned real quick, with nobody telling me, that if we're not at these committee meetings, you don't know what's going on. So you can put as little effort into this job as you want to, or you can put the most. We were elected for a reason, and I say make the most of it. And again, I think it's giving the citizens injustice to allow just a simple majority. In my opinion, it needs to be two-thirds, and I'll stay here late as y'all want to, debating anything. That's all I got.
Commissioner Lennox.
I will second everything Greg just said. I ran to be a voice of the people in District One, as well as for anyone in this county. And I've had people from other districts come to me because they feel confident that I will bring forward their concerns if need be. And I feel like everybody here has that same mission. I know that, because I've talked, and I know most of you, not all very well, but I think we all have the same mission. And it disturbs me that we would, someone would bring this forward to try to silence. I just don't understand. I think the two-thirds majority is fine, and I agree with Greg. If there's two-thirds majority, then it is what it is. But I was elected to represent District One, as well as my friend here, Ricky, and we have a job to do. And I think that two-thirds majority is fine. And I'm willing to stay here. I have to get up at 4:45 a.m. to get my business open and ready to go by 6:00. So I'm here, and I'll be here till 4:45 if I have to. But I'm just disturbed by this, and it really bothers me in light of everything going on in this country. Our people, especially in Williamson County, because I hear it every day in my store, want to be heard, and they want us, as the elected official, to be heard. And I see the looks, and I see the faces, and you know who you are, when certain members of this commission speak, because it doesn't agree with your agenda or your idea. But you know what? I was elected, and I will be here to speak for my people. And that's all I have to say. I mean, this is disturbing. I just-
Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been on the commission for eight years, and I can only remember one instance where the call, the question was called, where we actually, we didn't have a two-thirds majority vote. I think most of the time when the question gets called, the subject is becoming the proverbial dead horse. So, and this is part of Robert's Rules. I mean, Robert's Rules been around a long time, well before any of us came on the scene, and it'll be here a long time after we're gone. So I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to mess with a time-honored debate system that's been in place, and been used by many, many, I guess, I mean, I assume most county commissions in America use Robert's Rules, and as well as almost all public bodies. So I just, I don't think when you've got something like that, that's the time-honored system that you've been using for a long time, you don't, you don't mess with that. So I'm not in favor of changing the rule.
Commissioner Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want the record to reflect that I was the Commissioner in Rules that voted no. Really, my rationale was Bobby actually spent a fair amount of time kind of walking through kind of his opinion on why we shouldn't do this, and why he, as counsel, was recommending to not do it. I think, as Commissioner Lawrence said, Robert's Rules has been what this body has been using for quite some time. And really, changing to a simple majority over two-thirds has the ability to shut down debate prematurely. I've heard from no less than five citizens in the last two days about this particular resolution, and their concerns about changing it. And so I would just ask that we really give careful consideration to not change it, and to let the debate happen. And I think, to Commissioner Lawrence's point, I think for those of us that are new, we've watched you all debate and give space and flexibility to ask questions, to understand, because that's what we're here to do. So I just felt it was important that you all understand my reasoning in committee why I voted no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mary Smith.
And I agree that we were elected to represent the people from our district, and then people across the county. And I just want to say, I really appreciate this commission. I think there's some amazing people on this commission. And I have learned so much, just hearing from y'all and hearing during the debate. I can't tell you how valuable that's been to me, being somebody new. So I'm all in favor for not changing this rule, keeping it what it is, so that we can keep the debate going. We're headed into really challenging financial times. I think it's going to be really important to hear the input from everybody on this board.
Commissioner Mason.
I am also a member of the Rules Committee. And with all the rules, resolution that are before you tonight, we had spirited debate on all of them. It was actually a really long Rules Committee. And I think ultimately, these resolutions that were put before us or brought to us by members of this commission, ultimately, the decision was made that it needed to be flushed out by the entire body, and not necessarily a decision that was killed in committee. And so that's the purpose of it being here tonight, is for us to discuss and for the majority to decide, do we want to change it or not change it. And so I ask that you all keep that in mind when you're considering your decision is, again, the Rules Committee didn't want to be the deciding factor, we wanted it to be all 24 members.
Any other questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 112234, press your yes button. If you're opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Three yes, nineteen no.
Fails. Resolution 112235, resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning Rule 8.1. A, Appointment of Committees. Proper motion from Commissioner Paul Webb, seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. Rules Committee was 6-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
As you can see in the text, this is a thing that happens during the election year, and it's difficult for some of our committees to meet when we come back in September. So what this proposes to do, that the committees would be set during the July meeting, when we do our different committees, such as Parks and Rec, Rules, Steering, et cetera. And since the Comptroller's Office has asked us to have the budget completed before June 30th, that makes the July meeting the perfect opportunity to do that. And note there in the paragraph, where now for it be resolved, that this, there is an exception for election years, in which time the appointments will still be made, as we had this year during September. So this is a way to get the committee set as we start the new fiscal year.
Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mason.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, and I know Commissioner Webb likes to say that it's late. My understanding, again, being on the Rules Committee, is that in election year, the Steering Committee would meet in October, not July. That during the rest of the years, non-election years, we would still have Steering Committee in September. And I just want to make sure that that was my understanding. That's how the resolution reads, but-
What you've got is, you've got the standing committees will go- In an election year, to October instead of September, except for Rules, Steering, Human Resources, and Parks and Rec, which would be in the September meeting of an election year. So you've got, the other standings are getting pushed back to October because of the difficulty of getting them done in September in an election year. This keeps those though in September for the purposes of getting Rules, Steering, et cetera. So it's a slight deviation.
As replace the current language, that actually says appointed during the July meeting.
In non-election years, it will be July, correct. And it's been that way, but what it has said is, is that in election years, they would be appointed in September. And what this, that's what the change is, is for those non-standing committees, well, the non-specified committees, would go to October to give you, September to get Steering and Rules, and then the standing would be appointed in October, instead of trying to do them all in September.
Language in the resolution is saying she'll be appointed during the July meeting, and that should read October.
Election years. If it's a non-election year, all of this takes place in July for both standing committees, et cetera. If it's an election year, then all standing committees are appointed in September, or in October, except for Rules, Steering, Human Resources, and Parks and Rec, the way I'm reading this. And Bobby, correct me if I'm misstating that. All standing committees appointed annually during the September meeting, except for election years, when they're appointed in October, except Rules, Steering, Human Resources, and Parks, which are appointed in July, except in election years, when they will be done in the September meeting.
I'm not doubting y'all. I just thought the purpose was to get us out of September because of election years, it being too difficult, and we were moving to October. But it looks like this is saying we're doing it in September.
While you're doing your rotating committees in September, because you guys do it while you're meeting.
Right, right.
So that's why we left it at September, okay? Now, your rotating ones, not rotating, your standing ones, will be October. We've had issues, especially when we had a big turnover like we did this year. For election years, it's very difficult for us to get everything done in September. Have Steering Committee meet, you know, that two weeks between you being elected and the first meeting. So that's why we're moving that part to October. But Mr. Mosley's correct in his explanation.
Follow-up, Commissioner Mason.
Here, this is supposed to make this simpler with a flow, but I can understand why Commissioner Mason would have questions. I had to read it again to understand, too. But in our discussion of the Rules Committee, and looking over this, that is the intent, to make it simpler. But we have the exception in election years, that would happen, much as it did this time, so.
Commissioner Mary Smith.
Wait till October to do those committees? If they're like, this year, there's a big turnover during those committee meetings in September, with just being the existing ones that are still on the commission, so you could have, you could have committees that don't have a full quorum.
And if they did not have a quorum, they could not conduct business.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Nineteen yes, three no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112236, resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning Rule 8.3A2, 8.3B2, 8.3H2, and 8.3I2, concerning rotating committees. Proper motion from Commissioner Drew Torres, seconded by Commissioner Paul Webb. Rules Committee was 6-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
In the body, this does some clarification of what we're trying to do, and you'll see there that we did have an issue on the Human Resources Committee, and that's cleared that up. This shows now under Section 1, the committee meters will be chosen annually as we go around our paired districts, six on a rotating basis. And then that's the intent, as you see down there in the last sentence, to have everyone during their four-year term to serve on each of these committees. Again, I think this is just a little clarification.
Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-one yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 112237, resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning Rule 1, convening the Board of County Commissioners. Proper motion made by Commissioner Paul Webb, seconded by Commissioner Drew Torres. Rules Committee was 6-4-0 against. Explanation, please, Commissioner Webb.
See there, under the third whereas, our rule states that the package shall be mailed to each commissioner. And that's currently what we're doing, we're mailing, and if you have the option, you have it emailed, which is in the next whereas. What this is changing to, we're going to replace that, that the package shall be provided to each commissioner. That way, the provided gives the clerk the option to mail or email, or both, at each commissioner's request.
I believe that Jeff had passed these out to each one of us during the recess, and if you'll fill it out to your preferences and hand it to Jeff before you leave, he'll make sure that you receive copies of both in the manner of your liking. Any questions? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? All those in favor signify by pressing your yes button. Any opposed, your no. Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Okay, what is your vote, Commissioner Mason? Record the vote, please, Mr. Whitby.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Is that it? Thirty-eight was pulled. All right. I believe Resolution 112238 was pulled by its author. And if that is the case, then I believe we are through all the resolutions for the evening. Is there any other business that needs to come before this board before we adjourn? We are adjourned.